Recording in progress.
A call to order, the Monday, April 10th, 2023, Town Council Committee, the whole, to order at 6:02. All councils are present with the exception of Council Westerville. Onto new business. FYE 2023 proposed budget. So today on our schedule, we have the capital improvement projects and we will be starting on the education section. So we have representatives from Groton Public Schools and the Board of Education to sort of introduce their CIPs for us. Thank you, welcome.
Mr. Mayor, can I just jump in real quick?
Sure.
I'm sorry, I just need to disclose that I am an employee of the Groton Public Schools and I'm just disclosing at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. It seems like it's been such a long time since I've seen you all. But once again, I am still Kim Shepherdson Watson. I am still the Chair of the Groton Board of Education. We do have some board members that are online with us. Looks like we have Liz Porter, Jay Weedlove, Andrea Ackerman, and Matthew Schulman. And to my left is Clint Kennedy. He is the Director of Technology. To my right is Superintendent Austin. And to my second right is, what's his face now, Sam Kilpatrick. And he is the Director of Building and Grounds in Groton. But I do want to say my thanks and appreciation to the Mayor and to the Town Manager for allowing us to do our CIPs first and get it done with. We are on April break and though the two esteemed gentlemen to my far left and right will be here, Superintendent is taking a well-needed and well-deserved rest. So thank you very much for moving us to this night and for first thing. So I am going to ask that we turn to the Budget Book of 32 in just a summary. On request is I'm just going to list all the ones, even the ones that have been zeroed out and then I guess we can go. Mayor, I wasn't quite sure about how you want us to do it after. I'll list them all and then if there are questions.
Sure.
Okay, questions are the ones, because I do, let me slow down now, I'm going really fast.
That's good.
There are a couple of things that I would like us just to re-talk about, that have been zeroed out. Not that we can do much about them, but I do want to have a quick conversation. So on page 32, we have the athletic, high school athletic facilities and that was...
Oh, you're in your budget.
No, I'm in...
Section B.
Section B, page 32.
I am sorry, I don't know what section. It's Section B, page 32. Does that help you out?
It does.
Sorry about that.
Just letting you know, our monitors aren't working.
I'm just going by the number on the bottom of this page. Okay, I'm still okay?
So they can keep up with you, those are the ones for just this year.
Thank you. So once again, number, the first one is the Fitch High School Athletic Facilities. Is the Fitch High School Field House is the second one. Is the Northeast Academy Air Quality. And the Fitch, the next one is the Fitch High School Barnum Schools HVAC Upgrades. And then the next one is the Fitch High School Culinary Arts. We have then the Security Camera and the District Safety and Security. And then Fitch High School Bleachers and then the Fitch High School Sewer Line Repair. So those are the CIPs that we're offering to the Town Council. Isn't that one, the upgrade, is that by ESSER?
We have done some through ARPESER.
Okay. And the Air Quality?
No, that's put off until 2025.
Okay. Sorry.
Okay.
And I think...
Just to note that if you look back at 210, some of those like Air Quality can't be discussed this year because they're not in this year's budget at all in any way.
Right.
It has to at least have a zero to be discussed.
Right. And so the ones that can be discussed are on page 210? All those ones with dashes?
Everything but C and D, I believe.
Yeah, A, B, E, yeah, A, B, E, F, G, H, Y.
I would like to say that we do go after every grant we can possibly go after and we did put in for the HVAC grant, but we did not get it. But sometimes what they'll do is they'll ask again and so we can do that again. Many of those state grants, they'll pay half, just like with the safety, security. We'll be submitting that, Dr. Kennedy will be submitting that in a week or so. So that would then be, the expectation is we pay half and they'll pay half. So we're hopeful that we'll get some contribution from the state. I just wanted you to be aware that anytime there's a grant opportunity, this district really goes for it. So I wanted you to know that we are seeking any possibility of grants. And in our ARPESER funds, there was a section for some HVAC which we took care of two major projects at Fitch High School already. So just wanted to let you know that.
Oh, and sorry, and Bev, another board member has joined this meeting.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, so just for a little overview of how we're going to do this before we get started, we will be taking up F, 5F, 5G, and then 5I. The other ones, if a council wants to fund those, they can make a motion for those and then that could put discussion on the floor. Other than that, we will not be discussing those. So we will start with 5F, Security Cameras, begins on page 228. And I will make a motion for $245,000. Okay, moved by Melendez, seconded by Franco. Does Council have any questions? Council Jones?
Thank you. Thank you Superintendent for being here. Can you talk a little bit about what this is for, this particular item?
Absolutely. We actually had a Homeland Security Audit done for Fitch High School and one of the things that came out of that was the need to connect right to our police department and to have cameras that were in good working order. So we had entertained what is called a Mutual Link, which is a way that our systems can talk to one another, school to school and to the police department. And in working with Chief Assaro, we really thought this was a wonderful opportunity and wanted to take advantage of that. So several of our schools are brand-new and their cameras are really high-quality. But several of our schools, even Northeast Academy and Katherine Kelnowski, you know, are decades old now, decade and a half. So we really could use upgrades in some of the camera systems for the aging, the older schools. So we are looking to that and Dr. Kennedy has been really firsthand on this project so he might be able to explain it even further.
Oh, brief, brief. Good evening, thank you for having us. I think of it as a three-layer cake, if you will. So this request will complete all of the both internal and external cameras as well as some panic buttons that we want to do as that first tier to have equity across all of our buildings, seven schools, and the central office. The second tier is really the software that will connect all those cameras so that we can monitor them from a single place, be it with Sam from a maintenance perspective, with Ms. Austin for the Superintendent, or for the police, or for the local fire and so forth. Right now, for them to access cameras in those buildings that are not new, they need to actually physically access those buildings. This second tier would pull all those current new cameras together and allow us to, from a cruiser, from a phone, from a computer, what have you, select any or all cameras and be able to access those. Third layer of our cake, as we continue to build, is the Mutual Link system, which is a separate request. What that does is it allows us to, should an incident happen, be it triggered by a cellphone, a phone call, a panic button, it takes the cameras in that vicinity, opens a voice channel, and provides access in real time for all those who are designated, maintenance staff, school administration, police, fire, what have you, to open a channel, have access to those cameras, because we're asking for many cameras. And if there's an emergency, one doesn't typically want to have to go through hundreds of cameras to be able to identify where the issue is. So that third tier really leverages the first two, cameras, software that stitches it together, and then the third layer really pulls it together so in an emergency situation, it can be accessed quickly, decisions can be made, help can be brought to bear on the particular issue in real time. So that's really what we're looking at, three tiers of a security cake, if you will, to get us to good across the board, software to stitch it together, and then be able to respond in time quickly.
And also to have walkie-talkie systems at each of the offices that would talk directly to the police department. We have walkie-talkies that we use internally, but this one would be really the level that the police department, fire department uses and we could be on the channel with them should there be an emergency.
Is this something that has to be done this year or could it be done next year?
I really don't feel we can wait for this one. This one was really identified through a Homeland Security Audit and I feel very compelled that if, the number-one thing for Superintendent to be concerned about is our students and staff's safety. So I really feel that this is a viable program and that it's going to get us to really a point of feeling a little more secure and I really don't, I don't think it could be wait. I think it needs to happen.
Is this, I don't know, all the places you spent your ARPA money or your DoD, is this something that ARPA money or grants can be used to purchase?
No, there wasn't a section in there for security. There was a little section for HVAC, but we had to identify early on, like two and a half years ago, the exact areas that we would be using the funds for. And they really were mostly in the way of education and making sure that we made up for lost education. So they went into resources like tutors and staff and extra summer school and all those kind of things, before and after-school programs so that our kids could have the kind of, you know, accelerated learning to get back.
Did you have the same flexibility that, I'm assuming you didn't have the same flexibility that the town had in terms of how it...
It was a totally different program. ARPESER was definitely in the name of education. We had an ARPESER CAPS consultant. We worked as a team, we submitted it, it had to get authorized by the state. And there might be some tweaks that you can make inside, you know, but they really were in those areas of talent and academics. And the only operations side was really for the HVAC, anything that was really related, COVID-related, it had to be immediately related to that and learning loss.
And can you just talk a little bit about, it looks like these two systems have to really be done together. I mean, it's really $300,000, $400,000 for the whole...
The first two tiers, absolutely. If we want to leverage the investment in that first tier, absolutely. Mutual Link, that third tier, is really going from a school project to a town-wide project because it's front and center, it would be school board, it would be police, it would be fire across the town. So that really is where, that third tier of the cake pulls that all together.
And I also want to say, we are putting in this grant, so we really can't wait because should we get the grant, the state is going to pay half of this.
So this is a grant, just explain, is this a grant for this?
Well, there's a grant that we're applying for the state for the same project, they will pay half. So if we're really lucky, we'll get it from the state and we'll only be asking for half this amount.
You getting this grant isn't dependent on us giving this to you today, is that right?
Well, if, I don't know where I would come up with the other half if I didn't have this.
But is this something that could be done at a, you know...
I think if you receive the grant, you're supposed to go ahead and put the project together.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions? Council Franco?
Thank you. So the question I have is, we just built new schools and I thought this was all going to be part of the school, all the new schools and their programs.
The new schools do indeed have state-of-the-art camera equipment that came with them to elementary schools and GMS. So the cameras as part of this expenditure would be internal and external cameras in the other schools as well as central office. And then the second layer, the stitching together, would allow us to take old and new schools, all now with new cameras, and pull them into one system.
So you mentioned the ESSER funds, but what about your DoDia funds? Can you use those? Because you can use those for anything.
The DoD, we actually have a plan with technology, so we've already put that supplemental fund towards the technology plan. We actually took much of our technology out of our budget so that we could get it down under 3%. So we've already, you know, spent those, expended those funds from this year.
Because it was sort of, like we did, I do know in last year's budget and our CIPs, we expended quite a bit in CIPs to the schools. I believe the roofing was over a million dollars and things of that nature. So there were some very large CIPs last year.
That was it, right? Was there any, you know, just the roof? But that has not been done yet?
Right. Right, so that hasn't been, that money hasn't been spent yet? All right.
We're going out to bid this spring and I think also looking at solar.
All right, so I'm just, I'm just, I don't understand why you couldn't use the ESSER funds. You're saying that it could not be used for anything other than education? There could be nothing for equipment of any sort?
We've already submitted the plan, it was very carefully delineated. We're in the kind of home run stretch of the plan, it goes out till this next fall of 2024. So it's already been accounted for.
So you can't change it?
No.
And you, you're saying you could not use those funds for those?
No.
All right. Thank you.
Any other council, questions, comments? Council Parker?
When you're doing the grant, thank you, Mr. Mayor, you're putting in this amount of $245,000, did we get quotes for this already?
Yes, so this grant, the same information that we went through in specing out by school, by camera, to come up with the original CIP quote is also what we used to write the grant.
And that's...
Same background, budget, so...
You did say 50%. All right. Okay, thank you.
I do have another quick question, I'm sorry. What happens if you don't get the grant?
Then we'll have to pay the full amount.
And when would that be? How would you come up with those funds?
Why, that's why we're asking.
So this is for the full funding?
Well, that's what the quote is for in front of you, for the full funding. But should we get the grant, I wanted you to know, should we get the grant, we'll only have to spend half of that.
And when would you send the other back?
Well, I don't know that we would take the whole thing, we would just take the half.
Okay. And when would you, but there's a way, you have to like release it as well?
Yeah, I guess John Burt would have to let us know.
Because there is a release, we know the release thing, because if you don't release it, it could sit there for five years.
Yes, go ahead, Sam.
Also, when applying for a state grant through that department, we have to, actually the town needs to allot the entire amount, not just half the amount. So we would have to, the $245,000 plus the $150,000 for the Mutual Link, we'd have to ask for the whole thing and the town would have to allot that amount of money and then they would get reimbursed the half after the fact. Just like, you may recall, we did some mass investments projects in the school, we had to get the town to agree to...
Fund.
Fund the entire amount and then we got reimbursed the half after the project.
So then you're going to reimburse and you would send it right back to the general fund of the town, is what you're saying?
It goes right back to the general fund.
Yeah, it wouldn't come to us.
That's correct. Mr. Burt?
Yeah.
All right, thank you. And you're saying it's 50%, right?
That's what it says.
It's in the 50% range. We've been as low as 48 and up to 58% and each grant that they're writing has a different percentage, but we're in the 50% range.
Thank you.
Council Coen?
Thank you, Mayor. Who currently has the access for the four other remaining schools who haven't been updated?
Who has access to, to access those cameras and so forth? It would be school administration, myself as the tech director and so forth. But again, some of these schools, because of their, them being very old, that access only takes place via the local area network within the school.
Okay. Because right now, it's just, it's sounding like if, God forbid, we were having an emergency situation and as we all know, with the increasing of mass shootings is, we need to be prepared, our law enforcement needs to be prepared. So this seems vital to me and I'm in support of it right now. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments? All right. Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. On $245,000, Council Cassiri?
Abstain.
Council Parker?
Yes.
Council Franco?
Yes.
Council Jones?
Yes.
Melendez is a yes. McBride?
Yes.
Boron?
Yep.
Yes. Westerville?
Yes.
Okay. Westerville's yes?
Yes.
Okay. So this carries eight in favor, zero opposed, one abstaining, Council Cassiri. And just for the note to the minutes taker, Council Westerville joined us at 6:16. Thank you, all right.
Mayor, it looks like I have a full board that's with us too, because it looks like Rita Volkman has also joined us in that we also have two other staff members, Ken Knight, who is our Director of Business and Finance, and our Assistant Superintendent.
Very good, thank you. Okay, on to 5G. District Safety and Security. And I will make a motion for $150,000.
Second.
Okay, motion by Melendez and second by Franco. Any questions? Council Parker?
This is also part of the grant?
This is not part of the grant. This is the third tier to our cake, which is the Mutual Link system, which would cover licensing and training and implementation across all parties, school, police, fire, and so forth.
Thank you.
All right. Council Jones?
Just information, so on the new schools where we did put in camera systems, are those connected currently to the police department? So this, so they're all set, basically?
They are from a Tier 1. Sorry, I'm using my cake. That's okay. They are from a Tier 1. They would then be integrated into this Tier 2 system, which would stitch all eight buildings together.
Okay.
Because right now, they're still standalone, each building. The new buildings are wonderful, they have cameras, internal, external, and internally a great way to see it. But again, they're not part of a larger pool of all cameras across the...
Right. Okay, so I understand that. So, but if something happened in one of these new buildings, the police department currently or emergency service can see?
The police department does not currently have access to those systems. Tier 2 would allow me, us to create an account that with appropriate policies around that, the police department, both on the town and city side, would be able to access and do what they need to do.
And if something happened, you know, today, they could, they come to the building to look at that stuff? That's where they, that's where they...
Correct.
And we get out old-fashioned maps and they have to look at the map and the numbers. So it's really a kind of tedious process. So this will, they'll be able to visualize all of this through the Mutual Link right on their screen and on their phone.
And was this, was this system not available when we built the new building, some system like this?
The Mutual Link system? It came onto my radar screen for the first time six months ago.
Okay.
State police is using it with all of our state schools, so Grosta will also be linked in. They are paying, the state of Connecticut is paying for them.
For them to be linked in?
Yeah.
And are they part of yours, this will be part of your system too?
Yeah, we'll have them all linked together because we are one campus.
Yeah, okay, okay, thank you.
Council Borlon?
Thank you. Just looking at the camera installation and this being another tier of the cake, as you stated, and the linking system here, to be just physically responsible, when do we think the cameras will be done? This next year could be done. My only concern would be, I'm in full support of it, I just don't want to prove something in this budget if it's not going to be utilized within this budget term. Would it be better to move it to the next budget season unless obviously it's going to be complete all at the same time?
Summer project.
That's my first question.
The intention is to have this be a summer project. July and August is a really important time for my department because teachers and students are for the most part not with us. It is our time to upgrade, clean, refurbish and so forth. This would be one of the top priorities for me this coming summer, should we have the dollars to purchase and so forth. I have done some recent checking, there was obviously a concern about getting equipment in and kind of the pipeline of these things over the past two, three years. What we're going after, the software licenses, of course, is not an issue, but the physical hardware is available. It's about a two-to-four week outlay as far as from time order to time on-site. So I, again, it would depend on when dollars were available and we were able to make that purchase, but it would be a summer, the intention is for it to be a summer project, so we're ready to go for day one of school, if at all possible.
Right. Okay, and it was stated that the state schools are doing this, are public schools also using a link system like this, are surrounding towns?
I'm not aware of any towns that have purchased and implemented as of yet, but I do know that there is a conversation within the tech directors network across the state of Connecticut and certainly Assistant Superintendent and Superintendents where everyone, this is on their radar screens. I do not have any information as far as, other than the state school system, who is moving forward at this time.
So law enforcement only tap in if there was deemed an emergency, they're not just constantly monitoring and making it, how are we planning of rolling this out?
Forgive me, sorry. Yes, that would be correct and there would be policy in place around when it is appropriate to access and so forth. Obviously, we want to make sure that they have the keys to that at all times so they don't have to ask permission and then be given access, but that the policy would be that they would access when there's an event occurring, not at all times.
Okay. You know, it's just great to see safety equipment. I did see some writing in things, when I was reading some of the state policies and things, and people using opioid funds, some were looking at security enhancement. Safety is also making sure people are safe from harm, let it be self-inflicted as well as, you know, drugs and drug trafficking within our schools, also the high use of vaping and vaping of marijuana. Cameras in conjunction with vape monitors are a huge safety indicator. Any plans to take this to the next level and get the vape monitors linked in as well?
We are looking into that to find out more about the vape monitors because I agree with you that I feel that would be really a good deterrent for us at this point.
Yeah, I was kind of hoping to see some of that on here because I am worried about, you know, the crisis that we are in this country and all states, feeling unsafe in our school. I'm also worried about the safety of our kids while in the building. It's not a shooter situation, but necessarily our drugs, our opioids, our, you know, suicide rates, our Narcan, you know, that's why I was bringing up the AED machines and making sure those are online. Are those going to be somehow connected to the system when you open up one of those AED machine boxes?
I don't believe there's a direct connection, some type of physical trigger that when those boxes are opened. But if it is an event and it's triggered, again, a triggering event for this third layer would be a panic button that's pushed, there's an app to initiate this, there's a phone call that can initiate it as well, and Mutual Link lays over, as Superintendent Austin said, a map, the cameras are in that immediate vicinity, and a voice channel that would go through phones and radios and so forth. So is that an option for the future? Yes, I would then have to physically connect those AD devices to the network so that it would be triggered. And I'm not aware of a system that does that, but I'm certainly happy to look at it.
In the medical field, there's such a system and it can pinpoint watch AED, you know, when you go to run for an AED machine, you know, you just do it and you don't, you know, ask for help at that time, you access that machine. And so when that siren goes off, you can have it pinpointed so they know what floor it's going off, can be linked into your system so that way the right help would come.
Yeah, I think it would be a perfect triggering event to initiate this system, I agree.
Also, you know, it'd be great to see if in the future, some of our opioid funds would be in support of these vape monitors, safety cameras, Narcan, you know, devices. would be in support of these vape monitors, safety cameras, NarCam, you know, devices. As I stated, you know, a lot of the AED machines and NarCam are linking together as one system, because if a person is down, it's emergency, and you don't know if it's NarCam or, or heart, or cardiac, or what form of cardiac arrest, or heart failure, heart attack. So it'd be important to really be thinking outside the box here and really looking at that language to see how we could, you know, purposely use those funds and distribute them for our schools, as well as a safety mechanism to prevent opioids, drug use, drug trafficking, and usage.
Counselor's time is expired?
Thank you. Usage in our buildings, which we are aware is, you know, is going on across our towns. Thank you.
Counselor Franco?
Just a very quick question. Jumping off of Counselor Bordalun, thought she had a good question there on when is this going to be implemented, and when do you get the money? So if the money, when, when does this money get, become available, Mr. Burke?
Anytime after July 1st for our money, yeah.
So you'll have, you'll have a big enough window there to get it done in the summer of 2023?
The answer is yes. Will it be tight? Yes. It will. Because again, there's a two to four week window to get equipment in, and then we actually have to have it installed and so forth. We have all the identified areas where we'd like it to be and so forth. Obviously, if, if, if I'm alerted July 1, then I have to jump into action. I think those are when dollars would be available. If I knew prior to that, a successfully passed budget, that if it did include this, then I can start putting that schedule in, in alignment for those summer months to try to increase our odds of having it fully completed by day one of school.
The other thing that we can do is, as we write the bid spec for this and get the advertisement out, we could have a provision in there that would state that, provided that the money is, is approved, that we'd move forward with the project. So people could actually bid it before we actually got the final okay.
Well, you, you would probably get the okay, what, by, when does the RTM respond in? Mr. Burke?
I think everything has to wrap up by the end of May. Is that right?
May 25th.
Yeah, May 25th. So you'll have at least, you know, four or five weeks.
With that caveat, yes, that would be very helpful for our planning purposes and so forth. Yes.
All right. So I'm writing a note in my book, summer of '23. All right. I'm holding you to it.
First day of school, '23, '24 school year.
I'm holding you to it then. Thank you. It's in my book.
Thank you.
See that, Juliette?
Any other counselors? Counselor Bordalun?
Uh, thank you. The other thing is, is, you know, we really have to make sure our policies are up to date regarding safety and what we deem as emergencies and emergency plan. I know I have heard from security people that have worked in the past at Fitch, and I feel like there was no real execution of plans, and that's when I, I was digging deeper, looking at the AED machine issues across, not just your, you know, our buildings, but around the town, in support of, you know, folks that have had cardiac arrest. It's interesting, in our last budget meeting, one of the VNA nurses from Yale, Yale stated that, you know, not in our district necessarily, but there was a cardiac arrest situation, and staff responded accordingly. There was nurses on the scene. So looking at these safety measures, you might start capturing things that you weren't catching before. I have seen other districts where they've caught, I'm not saying our staff, other staff doing things, things after the fact, caught on camera. How are we triaging and going to handle this? You know, what's the plan in place as far as implementation? Because it's one thing to put a camera, you know, we look for the crazy outlier of something critical or very seriously, but we also have other measures in place that we have to be careful about, and how that's going to work. So I'm just curious as to what are the plans when, you know, you're not hitting the panic button? Is there frequent monitoring, or how are we doing this? That's my question.
So the, the current camera systems in all the schools, the new systems, as well as the, the older systems we have, are all accessible in real time by building administration. We have larger monitors within their offices, so there's real-time monitoring of those, also at the, in the main office of each of these schools. That gives a real-time view of what's happening on multiple cameras. Obviously, monitoring all cameras at once is something that is very difficult for staff to do, so you can cycle through those. But number two, we do record that video, make it available to administration, to district office, to the, the police, should there be an investigation of some type of incident. So we are following those current procedures. Part of this project, not this particular item, but the first tier of the cake, is really to make sure that we have the cameras in the right places, so that they can be monitored and recorded over, you know, X days and so forth, so that they can be used in a very similar fashion of how they are now. Also, we do take the security of that very, very seriously, so this video is seen and accessed by the appropriate staff members and not by others. So we, we would follow a similar process as we do now, with that additional layer of obviously giving, granting access to the appropriate people for all cameras across the district.
That's great to hear. And some of the other things I'm also been reading about is the need for cancer, for cameras in elevators as well, for folks who have disabilities. There's no line of sight in there, so is there any look to installing any cameras inside there?
The current plan does not include cameras within, in the physical elevator. It does include cameras, and most are already covered, of cameras that clearly show the front of the camera, of, of the elevator, both the area in front, but also within.
Excuse me. We shouldn't, I don't think we should publicly say where our cameras are going to be.
I agree.
I, I, that's my opinion.
Right. And I agree with that as well. I, I do think that cameras should be put inside elevators, if that can be just looked at.
All right. Thank you.
Um, that's just because if a person was to have a seizure or something inside of the elevator, and some, you know, not every staff or student that has a disability doesn't need a one-to-one escort. They may have a key or, you know, it is, it is a new change now, even in hospitals and things, making sure that you're capturing that data as well.
Thank you. Any other?
Do I have time remaining?
Um, you have 45 seconds.
Yeah. Again, thank you for all that you guys are doing, and I do think that these, is there any way you could move the time clock right to the edge of the person on the end here? If you slid it over two feet, I would be able to see it, and it would just be more equitable from home. I apologize. I'm not feeling too well, and so I need to be here. But I appreciate this and, and the forward thinking of, you know, our safety of our students. It's very important, not just from a, you know, high-profile incident, just from all levels, making sure that staff and students alike have a backup, a backup, which also can clarify stories, you know, for staff, because, you know, it's, it's important that they also feel safe. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other counselors? Okay. Seeing none. So I'll call for a vote on $150,000. Second. Counselor Casiri?
Abstain.
Counselor Parker?
Yes.
Counselor Franco?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Melendez is yes. Counselor McBride?
Yes.
Counselor Bordalun?
Yes.
Counselor Westerville?
Yes.
And Counselor Jacome?
Yes.
Okay, carries eight in favor, zero opposed, one abstaining. Casiri?
Point of information, really quick.
Sure.
I apologize. I thought I'd be able to see it, but the way the angle is, I cannot see the numbers, so I'll just need some.
All right. What can you see in the room?
I can see everybody, but the numbers are not zoomed in enough to pick up.
So you can see the board, you just can't see the number?
I can't see the numbers, and I can't even see, can't even see them lit up.
I, I just don't think the zoom camera is focusing.
So what you're saying is no matter where we put it, you're not going to be able to see the number?
Um, I would be able to see it if it was like, so the closest angle, because the angle is the right of John Burke, that's the closest, most visible, detailed angle. So yes, if the, if the time was somewhere there, but that would take away from the council seeing the time, so. It's okay. I just, if you could just give me like a minute warning would be helpful.
Okay. Will do. Thank you.
Thank you. You're welcome.
All right. On to 5I, page 231. And this is the Fitch High School sewer line repair. And I will make a motion for $75,000.
Second. Jones?
Okay. Motion by Melendez, second by Jones. All right. Any discussion? Counselor Bordalun?
Uh, thank you. I know I heard this one in one of the other meetings. It's basically, it was leaching, if I remembered correctly. Is that true?
Leaching, was it, to fix?
Uh, it was sort of leaking and leaching out into the surrounding soils.
Well, these, these sewer lines that are under the slab in the vintage section of Fitch High School, the original slabs to the building, which are in excess of my age, have deteriorated. In some cases, when the cameras went down there, there were actually no, no pipes left. And so they blasted through that and created a pathway for the sewer to continue on down into, into the next section of pipe. So it's temporarily repaired, but it's about five feet below the slab in some sections, and some may have leached into the ground, possibly. Yes.
Okay. So again, you know, I guess I was not part of the decision to put a new, a new front on an old building, you know, it just, and the amount that, that's costing us, I guess with this, have you identified any other pipes, or are we going to be sending cameras down? I think that we shouldn't wait until we have a backup problem, then send the cameras down and realize there's no pipe there in back. I think we really should be looking, knowing that this one's failed, that we're, we're going to assess all of them.
Yes, thank you. We do have a plan to continue our investigations, but this was the most critical one, was actually in, in one of the tunnels, and we had a sewer fly situation, so that's why we discovered it. And we will look in some of the other, older areas of the school where there are underground. That'll be part of the project, is when they come in to take a look at some of the other areas as well.
Well, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Franco?
Thank you. So I recall us having some kind of sewer something last year as well. You had to come last year. I, I, did you have something? I just can't, for the life of me, remember this, but I remember there were cameras, they went down there, there was the same kind of explanation.
Not last year. I, I've talked at board meetings about it.
Point of information? I believe, within the last three or four months, we talked about this at a meeting. And, may I continue? I just, I know I'm taking too much time.
I, I'm just trying to figure out, because I, I remember this conversation, and I remember I thought we allocated funding to fix this already.
I thought we said you guys were going to go ahead and pay for it early to get it done and repaired, is what my understanding of that meeting.
Maybe the temporary fix that we had to take care of.
Yeah, we, we paid for the temporary repair.
Mr. Burke, do you have any information on this?
I think it came up at the joint meeting you had a couple of months ago, is where it came up. But I, I don't know. I looked through the system, talked to some other people. No one knows of anything being allocated in the past. I don't, I don't see anything in the system.
The only other thing that may be a bit confusing is that we did ask for some drainage lines over at Northeast Academy for the, but they were exterior to the building, French drains, that sort of thing, to take some of the moisture out of the ground that's near the building.
Yeah, this, what I recall, I thought was up at Fitch, and it was outside the building. It was on the property, not under the building.
I'm not aware of it.
It's going to pop up, and then I'll be like, that's what it was. But I, I'm all in favor of you having good sewers. Not that I want to spend money on sewers, because, you know, you really don't get to say, oh, look how nice that is, and really, but it's absolutely necessity, so I will be supporting this. But thank you.
Thank you.
Just for clarity, Counselor McBride has last year's budget. The only CIP was the roof for Charles Barnum.
And I just looked at the year before that, and there wasn't anything there?
Was it during the year? I'm telling you, there was something sewer that came to us in the past.
Point of information, I remember in a couple of years, it was also, the only piping I remember was the lead in the water and the piping and the, the binding agents.
Yeah, that was another one.
Took care of all of that.
Thank you. Does any other counselors have questions? Comments? Okay. Seeing none, I'll call for a vote.
I'm still.
Counselor Bordalun?
I just had a question. The temporary fix, how much did that cost?
Is Mr. Knight online?
Mr. Knight, do you recall that?
I'm, I do not recall. I apologize.
I'm just curious as to why, you know, you guys, what was the difference in the cost for a permanent fix versus a temporary?
Well, it certainly wasn't $75,000.
No.
Was it like in the $10,000 or $5,000? I mean, how much was the temporary?
We'd have to look that up to be accurate.
Yeah.
It was something that we felt we could do.
Yeah. And do we have a process, Town Manager Burke, where if there was an emergency, like the sewage, that we would have to then allocate some money right away instead of waiting for a CIP? Because I just want to be physically responsible. I know for me, at times, we're all faced with financial challenges, and, you know, there's those little bandages you put on things, but when you actually pick it apart and look at it, they say, okay, this is going to cost $5,000, but if you temporarily fix it now, it's going to be $1,000. And I'm like, well, forget about it. Let's just fix it for five. So I guess, I just wish we had that kind of dialogue, if we're going to be paying for it in the end, because whatever we paid to temporarily fix it, meaning taxpayers, we could have, you know, had that as a cost savings, because it would just make sense to get it done. So is there a process in place in the future, if a pipe was to bust tomorrow, and it's considered urgent and it's temporary fix, how come it can't come before the council to be fixed?
Well, I don't think you, whether it's town facilities or school facilities, if that's the case, it'll get, we'll take care of it immediately and then figure it out.
Yeah, so I can hope that.
The, the charter is very, you know, precise of what steps you take for different things, you know, and so we're guided by that. But obviously, there are some provisions in there for true emergencies.
Yeah, I would, I would consider a pipe non-existent, leaching into the ground, an emergency of sewage. So I just would hope that in the future, we can open up that dialogue as a council, and at least, at least to the town manager, and then he can send a report out. We can get on the agenda right away, and maybe not hold it to a CIP just for the sake of understanding and, and, and financial cost. Thank you.
And certainly, if it's an emergency, we'd get it right on to the council. We wouldn't go through, we wouldn't wait to a budget if it was a true emergency. And of course, I mean.
Right. And this is something that could have.
Go ahead.
This is, this is something that definitely could have been handled, or at least agreed upon by the council before CIP.
And certainly, if I received that request, we would proceed with it. I hadn't received that request.
All right. Thank you. I just hope that we can open up that dialogue as well. Thank you.
Any further discussions? Okay. Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on $75,000. Counselor Casiri?
Yes.
Counselor Parker?
Yes.
Counselor Franco?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Melendez is yes. Counselor McBride?
Yes.
Counselor Bordalun?
Yes.
Counselor Westerville?
Yes.
And Counselor Jacome?
Yes.
All right. Carries nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. Thank you.
So the rest of the things that were zero, as I mentioned when we presented our budget a couple of days ago, I know that the field house, the bleachers, the field, sorry, the other stuff that had the athletic, I do know that it's part of the field task force. I just wanted to just continue to remind people that those are not in great shape, and that, just to remember that as we move forward on a bonding issue, because it's going to be so large. But once again, I was just doing that, not, just to make sure that we all were kind of thinking about it. And Mayor, my request is, is that, that you and I could jointly hold a, a subcommittee, it would obviously come from you, to kind of take a look at our culinary arts, that's $600,000, because we, we just have very outdated services, and for our career pathways, it would be just really, just be interesting to see if there's a way that the town and the school could come together to find funding or ways to, to kind of think about that culinary program, so that we can give all of our students an ability to pursue passions that they may have.
All right.
So I would, I guess I'll be looking forward to it. I don't know how the council goes about forming committees, but that would be my desire, is that we could get a couple of people from the board and the town, and maybe some supporting staff to help us with that.
All right. I'll set that up.
Okay. Thank you so much. Once again, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a hand up.
We're not sure. Counselor Bordelon?
Is there a way that we can talk about that culinary? What would I have to do to get that on the floor to talk about it?
You'd have to make a motion to, for it.
And I, any particular way I'd have to do it? I just want clarifying.
You'd just make a motion to fund it.
Even though there's a zero and we have it in our packet, can I move a number of zero and talk about it?
No. It's at zero.
Right, I understand that, but I mean, there might be a way. I just, I think, I mean, we've always talked about the ones that were zeroed out, and the way that the money is on there, maybe $300,000 or $100,000 would get the project moving, and it'd just be nice to have that on the floor to discuss.
Well, then you can make a motion for those numbers, but.
Sure, then. I'll make a motion for $100,000 for discussion purposes.
All right, what's the, is this?
Page 227. Page 227.
227, 5E. Okay, one second. Do I have a second? All right, I'm not getting a second.
That's fine.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. So we are on to 1B, I believe.
1A?
1A? 1A.
I'll make a motion for 1A for, I believe it's a million dollars.
Second, Casiri?
Second, Bordelon.
Okay, you said a million?
Yes.
Okay. So I have a motion for CIP 1A, $1 million. That was motion by Franco and seconded by Casiri. Okay.
Good evening, everybody. Greg Hanover, Director of Public Works. This is our annual paving allotment. Just to remind everybody, we had the roads inspected, no, probably three years ago now, and we inventoried each road in the town, the city, and Grand Long Point. Based on those inspections, they are assigned a pavement condition index, which is a number from 1 to 100, 100 being a perfect road, and 1 being a failed road. You know, we, our pavement management program is telling us we need to spend about $1.2 million per year to maintain our roads and to, you know, get them slightly above their average, which when we started was about a 71 PCI. We're now up to about a 76. We are doing a little bit better each year. So this year, we are focusing down in the Noank section of town. We have a lot of roads down there that are in the PCI range of 20s and 30s, which is pretty poor. One of those is Marsh Road, which is a collector road for, for Noank. And that road really took a beating when the Moser Avenue Bridge was closed, because that was really the only way in and out of Noank for that year, so that the bridge was closed. We also have Brookview Court, Cove Street, Church Street, the end of Pearl Street from Chesbro to the cul-de-sac, Potter Court and Smith Street. And we also have done some of our major collector roads. Last year, we did Buddington Road. The prior year, we did the north end of Flanders Road, and also Military Highway. This year, we're looking at doing the south end of Flanders Road from Route 1 to.
Just a point of information, I live in that section of Flanders Road.
Okay.
So.
From Route 1 to I-95. That will be done by contractors and mill and pave, so that would really take care of all of our major collector roads, get them all up to a PCI of 100. All these roads together total about $1.18 million. We do have estimated about $180,000 will have left over from last year's funds. We still have to do a couple of roads from last year, which is Boulder Court and Meredith Hill. We'll be tackling those in the next couple of months. So that's it. So if you take the $1.18 million and subtract the $180,000 we have left, we're about a million dollars we need for FYE '24.
Thank you. Counselor Bordelon?
Thank you. I do not have my leaving.
I can't hear him.
We're having a little trouble hearing you.
Can I hear you now?
No, it's the same. It's not your connection, it just sounds like you're far away.
No, I'm in the same distance. Can you hear me now?
One second. Okay, try again.
Can you hear me now?
Sean said one second.
One more second. Good. All right, try again.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, thank you.
All right, you're welcome. I'm just asking about, we get a lot of requests about River Road. I know that it floods a lot, and it's right at sea level, literally pouring over on certain sections of River Road. And I know people are saying that it's needing repair. Where does that road compare in comparison to these roads that we're planning to do?
River Road has a PCI of a 56, so it's getting to the point where it's going to need some major repairs coming up soon. But like you said, there are issues with the flooding. You know, the whole road in certain sections will need to be raised. That's going to be a major project, which we'll be looking at in the future with our Resiliency Coordinator. You know, maybe getting some funding for that. But we are, you know, taking care of the puddles and the patches that come up, which, you know, we get a lot of concerns from bikers and pedestrians, and we do stay right on top of those. But as far as, you know, redoing the whole road, it's going to be a major project in the future.
So it's not that it's being overlooked, it's that we're looking at restructuring the layout down there?
Correct. Yeah, it wouldn't make sense to pave it and then have it just continue to flood.
Absolutely, yeah. Because flooding also takes erosion away and breaks down the road with standing water. So that would be a little bit backwards, I agree. When, do we have anything written to the state yet for that, or is that still in progress? Or where are we, where are we at? Because I just, you know, when I'm looking at vetting of these roads and what we're doing, I'm just making sure that one is in, you know, has been started.
It's on our radar, but we haven't started anything formal yet.
Okay, maybe we should have an update on that soon then. Looking at these ones that you're requesting, obviously, you're doing them in order as, you know, the need. Definitely Marsh Road was a mess before the bridge was out, and it just got even worse. And it's very important that that's a secondary emergency road out of Noank if ever needed. So I do think that that one's critical. And it is important that we fund our roads, fund our schools, and, you know, make sure that we're, do what we can to keep up with everything. Is there anything on here that you think could wait, if you had to?
If we really had to, we could probably wait on Flanders Road. I mean, that is a, you know, a good chunk of the budget.
Yeah, that looks like it's got a, that's a 65, is that correct?
Yeah, it is. If that were like a residential road, we wouldn't be really paying attention to it. But because it is a major collector road, you know, we try to get those at a higher level, because of the amount of traffic.
So what would this do if we took off that one and maybe had that one come back? Because all the other ones are in the 30s, 40s, and low 20s. What if Flanders Road moved to the next budget? I mean, is it going to make it that critical? I mean, from a 65 PCI, maybe it would go to a 60 at best in one year?
Well, it's not just that you, yeah, but every time you push, keep pushing roads off, you're just going to push off other roads as well. I mean, we're trying to keep the number every year at that $1.2 million level. Certainly, the road itself, the pavement, yes, it could wait another year, but it's just the funding. You don't want it to lose the momentum, I guess.
It's not like you have other projects ready to go. I mean, basically, it's not like you're going to spot one right now.
So my question is, there's no other roads that are worse than a 65 that are not on this list tonight?
Oh, there are, but I would say that this road is one of our major roads that we want to get to 100. And we did the north part.
Yep.
Was it two years ago? So we just wanted to get this south part done, so that this road is complete, as well as, you know, like I said, we did Buddington last year. That one, we did the whole length of it. Military Highway's been done. And those are our major collector roads in town.
All right. Well, thank you for your explanation.
Thank you. Counselor Franco?
Thank you. I'm good with all of the roads that you've stated on here. Just to give a little, like, could you give some history, Mr. Burke, on why we took it out of bonding, and like, at least what your perspective is, is why the council did not want to bond anymore, and why we wanted to put a very bare, this bare minimum, basically, into our budget year after year? And sort of what the council said, we hope, how it would go forward.
Right, sure. And prior to me arriving, well, in the past, it had been done this way, where it was done year by year. However, it was an easy thing to cut every year, so we were getting behind on our roads. So the council, at one point prior to me arriving, had decided to bond it out to ensure, because once it's bonded out, you know, you have guaranteed funds to plug away a road. Once that bond money was all spent, the town council decided they did not want to incur the interest on the roads by re-bonding it, and said, let's, it was very clear, we're going to try to do it this way, but if things start getting cut, we'll go back to looking at bonding it out, so.
Correct, because I mean, there was, there is substantial interest on those. Is that correct?
Yes.
And our thoughts were, we, at least my perspective, I'd speak for myself when I voted on that, was we would rather use that kind of money and put it right back into our budget and not spend it on interest. So I will really hope that this is going to be like the true test of the RTM and this council, that we won't cut any kind of roads, and let's see how this goes. But thank you for all you do. I was here when the study came in, and they did all the roads with the PCI and the numbers, and I think these are some pretty low numbers, so thank you for trying to keep them all in one area and not spread out all over the town. So I think that's very wise of you. So thank you very much.
It saves on the mobilization costs.
Yes, thank you.
Any further discussion? Counselor Jacob?
Thank you, Mayor. I just had a quick question for Mr. Burke. On Peach 38, I'm just looking at some of the grants here, based on the state grants, the municipal project grants. Do we use any of those funds to fund this, or?
Which page are you on?
I'm on page 38, municipal grants. I don't know, it's looking like for $2,362,000.
Is that section A or B?
Oh, A.
A, Peach 38, section A.
Is it A, or is it just in the main?
It's in the front.
It's in the main?
Yeah, main, main.
It's the main?
Not in the section?
Main or A?
Which one's the section? In the beginning of the book?
All the way in the front.
So the main section?
Yeah.
That's the state aid we get every year.
Yeah, it's already accounted for in our budget, yes. Just generally goes in the general fund, and we get it every year, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, because I'm just looking here, it just says you can use it for, you know, public work-related projects. So I was just thinking roads and streets.
The state gives us money for snow and ice removal. It's in our, because, you know, we basically use it in our general public works fund.
Okay. No, I know, and in your budget letter as well, Mr. Burke, it did say, you know, before we cut departments, we got to look at our roads and funding our roads, and so I'm in favor as well in this. Thank you.
Counselor McBride?
Thank you. I appreciate Counselor Franco's comments regarding the general obligation bonds versus the capital reserve funds, but just, and I know last year's discussion, we went into great detail, and I can't foresee this council looking into using bonding for these, for these roads, but just for clarification, the reason behind, the thoughts behind potentially using bonding is because of a principle called the matching principle, which is you're supposed to match your revenues and expenses over the course of a year. And the thought process is, this $1.8 million of sidewalks, drainage, and roads, in effect, by using the capital reserve fund, we are taxing residents on $1.8 million for one year that they're going to enjoy the benefit for 30 years. So I just want to make sure that's on the record, that that's why municipalities sometimes bond. I agree with Counselor Franco, there are some additional interest costs. I wouldn't agree they're substantial, because they're at 2.5% now. But I just want to be on record of saying, there is some good reasoning for using bonding, because there's residents that may not live here 30 years, and we are in effect taxing them the full boat for this year. So I just wanted to clarify, but I'm in support of whatever the council decides. Thank you.
I have a point of information.
Sure.
So if we bond for 30 years for a road, you're paying, you're basically paying for it for 30 years, is that what you're saying? So even after?
Correct. We're still paying on that original five-year, we have about five, six years of spending, but we'll be paying for it for quite a long time. So they just start stacking up.
Right, so even after the money is all distributed and the roads are done, and we still need more roads to do, we're still paying for those old roads that we've already done. We have to bond again on top of the previous bonding, so you're double-decking on top of bonding, is that correct?
Correct.
So, all right, thank you.
No, I totally understand the philosophy, though. It's just in the long run, I do believe it costs more money to bond.
Thank you.
Sure.
Yeah, and I agree, it does cost more money. I'm not disputing that. But it is a concept that's well-known, and that's why the state and the government uses bonding for school projects and things of that nature, because they do want to spread it out to the taxpayer over the course that's utilizing the benefit of that road. That's the purpose for it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? I see there was a, there was a comment by Counselor Bordelon in the chat, if you can read that. Counselor Bordelon, you have?
Yeah, just, if you make the screen just the council as the picture, I would be able to see the timer. It was just a suggestion. Thank you.
Okay, sure. All right, any other discussion on this item? Okay. I'm not seeing any further discussion, so I'll call for a vote on $1 million, CIP 1A. Counselor Casiri?
Yes.
Counselor Parker?
Yes.
Counselor Franco?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Melendez is a yes. McBride?
abstain.
McBride abstains. Bordelon?
Yes.
Bordelon is yes. Westervelt?
Yes.
And Jacob?
Yes.
Okay, so I have eight in favor, zero opposed, one abstaining, McBride. Okay, on to 1B. And that's on page 212. And I'll make a motion for $210,000.
Second, Parker.
Okay, so that's motion by Melendez and second by Parker.
Okay, this is for a couple of bridges that we had received some funding for two years ago to do an in-depth inspection of the Thomas Road Bridge. The Thomas Road Bridge is a concrete box culvert that we had a DOT field screening done for, and they rated it as fair and recommended we get a full in-depth inspection done of it. We have completed that. Based on the recommendations from that report, what I'm asking for is $80,000 for engineering permitting and final design for that structure, and then the construction funds will be requested in FYE '25. The permitting on that is quite extensive, because it will involve work in Baker's Cove itself, so that's why that price is, may seem a little high. For Meridian Street, that bridge, believe it or not, is now almost 31 years old. And DOT inspects that one every two years. The last few inspections, they've been noting the expansion joint, which is the joint you see in the pavement at each end of the bridge, has shown damage, and it's starting to show evidence of leakage, you know, water and the salt from the road onto the abutment. So to repair that, we did hire an engineer. They did some preliminary plans, came up with a preliminary cost estimate for construction, which is $100,000. And then they also have $30,000 in there for the final design and contract bid documents and contract administration by the consultant. So for the Meridian Street, it's $130,000. Thomas Road, it's $80,000, and the total for that is requested $210,000.
Thank you. Counselor Franco?
The bridge on Thomas Road, is there a possibility that we can widen that?
We would have to add sections to that, or rebuild the whole thing to do that. They're boxed sections that come in, you know, so they kind of stack them together. You know, or we'd have to, you know, rebuild the whole. You know, or we'd have to, you know, rebuild the whole bridge.
Are you doing a, well, for Thomas Road Bridge, are you not doing the engineering, the permitting and the final design?
Just for the repairs.
Just for repairs, but not? There's nothing you can do to widen it?
No, there's no widening or any other, you know, enhancements, I guess you could say. It's just for repairs.
Can I just ask you? I've heard that there are bridges and that they can attach something to the outside for pedestrians. Is that, do you, off the top of your head, do you have any kind of pricing on that?
No, I know, when we were looking at the bike path along Thomas Road, we had a separate pedestrian bridge, timber bridge, I think it was. And I can't recall off the top of my head what that was, the cost was. It was pretty high. And I think that, and the permits were like, going to be almost ridiculous to even get them. But to, just to hang something off the bridge, I don't.
I heard that they make, they have prefab things that attach to bridges that can, is, I'm just curious. And maybe this is a future conversation, maybe not this one for the repair part, but maybe we could look at, like, I'm just questioning it, so.
I mean, you know, when we're going through the design, I mean, I can certainly ask that question.
Yeah.
Because, you know, the construction funds will be next year, so if it.
All right. I'm not looking to spend any more money. I'm just questioning if, what would be in addition? What would the kind of cost be for an addition of that sort?
They may tell me you can't do it on this type of, because it's just a box culvert, you can't do it there. I don't know.
I appreciate that, thank you.
Council Bordaln?
Oh, thank you. So the pavement that we put over there to align Thomas Road and pave, did we pave over that bridge as well, when we funded that originally?
Yeah, we paved over the box culvert. We put a membrane over the top, because there wasn't one existing, which keeps the water from going into the concrete and deteriorating it. So that work has been done. I mean, the work we're looking at is mostly guardrails. There's some scouring or erosion under the box culvert. Some of the concrete underneath is falling, so it's a repair of that. So we're not really looking at the road surface itself. It's mostly the guardrails and the concrete box culverts themselves and some erosion.
Gotcha, yeah. Because my concern, when we originally did it and things that I had brought up, was the fact that it needs, might need to be lifted a little bit. As we talk about the Groton Long Point Bridge and worrying about sea rise, that's a flood zone over there. And, you know, it may need some more infrastructure under there to keep it from eroding, because the water levels over there are much higher than they used to be when that originally was built. Have we had anybody look at that from an environmental standpoint?
Uh, no.
Yeah, so any further, you know, discussions on bridges and repairs when there's a waterway? I really do think that we should always be seeking an environmental opinion on it to be safe. I know we didn't have one at the time before. But, you know, it is important, because I, you know, want to cut once, not twice, and make sure that we're not digging up any funds that we already laid down. So this one might be a loss, but it definitely would be worth asking to see, you know, the improvements that maybe needed to meet the needs of the rising, that whole area is, you know, get pretty flooded. So I also think the walking down there, we put the lines in, but the lines are really not as wide. There was nothing before. But definitely, when you get to that bridge, it can be a bit of a tough jam-up on that section. There are a lot of people who fish off of that area. It would be nice to be able to have some type of area for them to utilize that's more permanent and more safe to access that area for the type of fishing and things that they do off that area. Is that being considered? I know Council Franco brought up the walkway.
No, we weren't really considering like a fishing platform or anything adding like that. I know if, when we were doing the Thomas Road Bike Path, I think that there was a, you know, for the, like you said, the timber bridge was going across there, there may have been a bump out or something for fishing and crabbing, that type of thing. But again, this is just, you know, really looking at fixing what's there now. You know, I can certainly ask if, you know, if we can add a sidewalk. And, you know, I don't know how crazy we want to get with what we're going to add on to this, but, you know, I could just ask the question.
I think it is important to realize, too, that folks that live in that area, where people consider low-income housing, that's sometimes the quickest path for them to get down and around to shopping centers.
One minute remaining?
Thank you. And when you go down Rain Hill, there's no sidewalk on there. Something I sent to the city mayor and spoke with Chris Connolly, Bum Gardner, and Summers about that road. We need to hide a lot of traffic and folks walking from EV parking lot up there. So folks can't access that road with a stroller or handicap accessibility. So just having something, because I see folks with strollers and children, and there's just no safe getaway over there. That's just a, as far as the Meridian Street, that's a major structure, infrastructure. I remember voting on that before to, you know, start the process. And I think we need to just close that out, so. But any more information you're able to bring back regarding the Thomas Road Bridge would be helpful. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Okay, seeing none. So I'll call for a vote on $210,000.
I had my hand up for my second time, sorry.
Council Bordaln?
Sorry, yeah, I had my hand up. I also just wanted to note that we talked about the connectability and sidewalks and walkways under that referral. Was that area assessed for that bridge in that discussion yet? Or has that been implemented in any way?
Referring to the bike path from Groton South Road?
Actually, it was Council Bum Gardner's referral before he left. The, I can't think about, the connectability, street walk, sidewalks and.
Complete streets?
Complete streets, thank you. Yes, complete streets. I just think that, again, that's a major artery for people to walk on. We should be really thinking, repairing these bridges and walkways and areas from however long ago, that we're using that study that we, you know, not only the environmental side of the, you know, conservation and the sea level rise on the one form that we signed on, but we also, you know, signed on to that other one, saying we're going to work on making sure people can walk around this town, which is really hard to do in certain sections of the town. There's no sidewalks and no accessibility. Thank you.
All right, any other discussion? Okay, I'm seeing none. So I'll call for a vote on $210,000. Council Casiri?
Yes.
Council Parker?
Yes.
Council Franco?
Yes.
Council Jones?
Yes.
Melendez is yes. McBride?
Yes.
Bordaln?
Yes, yes.
Westerville?
Yes.
And Jacome?
Yes.
All right. I have nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. Okay, on to 1E.
I'll make a motion for 1E for $300,000.
Second, Parker.
Motion by Franco, second by Parker, $300,000.
Okay, this is funds for preparing designs for the complete reconstruction of Main Street in Nowick. This would be from the railroad tracks by Terrace Avenue all the way to the town dock parking lot. You'll notice that Main Street was not in the pavement management portion that we just, that you just approved. The, one of the reasons is, this road is in really bad shape. It's actually probably one of the worst roads in town. There's a lot of issues with this road. It has poor drainage, varying road widths. The sidewalks are in poor condition or nonexistent. There are accessibility issues with no ramps. So we're looking at a project to address all of these things. Last year, we did get $75,000 approved for a consultant to start, you know, doing public engagement and conceptual planning. We have that process started. I'd hoped we were a little bit further along than we are, but we are moving forward with that. And I did want to get this funding to keep the momentum going for, you know, not wait another year to continue with the process to get the design and final cost estimates and get this, you know, this project moving forward.
Thank you. Any discussion? Council Jones?
Thank you. You said this is probably a general obligation bond to do this project?
Depending on what the cost estimate's going to be. But I imagine it's going to be a fairly expensive project, yes.
Do we have other roads that are sort of in the same situation?
Not that are this particular, this bad with, you know, so many other.
I guess my question, the question is, are we doing a, do we ever do bonds for just one road? Or do we do bonds for like several roads that need to be done at the same time?
We've done bonds for single roads. I mean, when it's been a major project, yes.
And this runs all the way down the hill, right to the dock at the end?
Yeah, it goes, yeah, actually both, down towards the railroad tracks on the west side as well.
Yeah, I'm pretty familiar with, I mean, this road, you are correct. It's pretty deteriorated around like Carson's Store, that area. It's really a mess in that area, so. That's why I was just wondering if we do, give bonds for one street? Do we do it, combine them with any other streets that are sort of coming up?
Once we get cost estimates, that'll be, you know, a council decision, obviously.
On how to perceive it, though?
Yeah.
Council McBride?
Yeah, thank you. I was just going to opine on what Council Jones mentioned, that this refers to bonding for roads, which I, which I support. As I mentioned before, I supported the town program earlier for Millie, but I do think this council should consider bonding for things that are going to last 20 or 30 years. So thank you for considering it.
Any further discussion? Council Franco?
So, not going to hold you to a number, but what kind of, what kind of funding do you think this is going to take? Overall?
Dollar amounts?
Yeah.
Probably in the five, six million dollar range, something like that.
Okay. I am, so this $300,000, because we have heard from residents who have reached out to us, really, you know, advocating for this item. And I want them to understand that this is to prepare a design so that detailed cost estimates can be provided. So this isn't the money to actually get the work done. This is to prepare designs.
Correct.
And I just want that to be clear. I'm in full favor of this. I have advocated for this area of town previously for, you know, all of these items. So I'm happy it's come to us. And I think when you're looking at like one area, maybe one potential road, and it would cost like millions of dollars as such, that may be something that you would look at, or depending on how our budget is at that time, how you would handle it. So thank you very much.
Council Casiri?
Thank you. So Director Hanover, we allocated the $75,000 last year for the concept plan, correct?
Yeah, that's to, yeah, really to start a public engagement process, because, I mean, that's going to be very critical for this project to, you know, be successful. And then to really develop concept plans, kind of like the plans you've seen for Claude Chester.
Right.
Those kind of high-level.
Understood. So if we allocate the $300,000 for FYE 24, the design plans will occur in FYE 2024? You're positive of that?
Yeah, we would just go right on into that, you know, once, we'd probably like do the public informational, I'm thinking like this summer, early fall, and then right after that, go right into, start the design so that we could have some good cost estimates for discussion, maybe before the budget season next year.
Great, so there would be public feedback on that?
Yes.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay. So I'm seeing none. So I'll call for a vote on $300,000. Council Casiri?
Yes.
Council Parker?
Yes.
Council Franco?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Melendez is yes. McBride?
Yes.
Bordaln?
Yes.
Westerville?
Yes.
Jacome?
Yes.
I have nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. Thank you. Okay, on to 3B. I'll make a motion for $75,000.
Second, Jacome.
Okay. So this can be found on Page 214. Motion by Melendez, second by Jacome.
This is our annual request for replacement sidewalk funds. This is to fix deteriorated sidewalks, driveway aprons, eliminate trip hazards, and add handicap ramps or replace them where they're needed for accessibility. Just as a point of reference, last year, we replaced or installed new handicap ramps, about 25 of them, replaced over 4,000 square feet of sidewalk. And we actually had a contractor come in and grind down over 250 trip hazards, which actually saved the town a lot of money to grind them down in lieu of replacing panels. And this is primarily done along Route 1 in downtown Groton. For this year, we're looking at continuing up Route 12, and then also in the Deerfield subdivision, where there's a lot of trip hazards there. And also replaced deteriorated sidewalks along Library Street from Elm down to Route 1 by the Baptist Church. And then also north side of Route 1 from Allen Street down to Elm Street, which is an area where we've had some trips and falls. So we're looking to take, take care of those areas. I will note, you know, I requested $75,000, which is what we've been getting for the last few years. As part of the 824 referral, the Planning and Zoning Commission did request that this be increased to $100,000, but that's purely up to you guys.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion? Council Bordaln?
Uh, thank you. Yeah, I think this is very important. Again, when our town was built, they really saw sidewalks as an afterthought in a lot of towns. And, you know, you should be able to leave from a neighborhood and connect to sidewalks. So I appreciate all your efforts and all the things you've done to do improvement thus far. I know some of these are state roads. And that's some of our, like, buttons and manual buttons down by Paquonic Road. Are those, you said that's a state area, is that correct? At the corner there where the old Pfizer daycare used to be before you.
Oh, Trails Corner? Yeah, that's a state, state signal, traffic signal.
Yeah. So, you know, it would just be helpful, too, as we improve things like this and enhance, that we also continue to put the pressure on the state sending others to make sure the infrastructures and things that they put in place are also ABA compliant and that they're actually coming out. I noticed the towns where folks bring those up more consistently, they start to, you know, it takes a while sometimes, but they start to get done. Over on that corner there, there's buttons, but no sidewalk. Out of the corner of my own neighborhood, for instance, there's buttons, but no sidewalk. Out of the corner of Blueberry Hill, Mirror Drive area over by Rainville. Again, that's, that would be the city, but again, it's that whole road of connectability. It's a main thoroughway with EV parking. And people should be able to walk there and cross there safely. And it connects to Thomas Road if you go further down. So if we, as a municipality, could be sending just simple letters saying, this is what we're doing in our town, and we would help, we need your support in maintaining these buttons and putting sidewalks in where these buttons are existing. Thank you.
Sure.
Just to mention there at High Rock in Paquonic, there's been at least a couple of times, the Traffic Authority has asked about exactly what Council Bordaln mentioned. And they've actually been on site with us, looking there before. But we can certainly try again and keep trying. But we can certainly try again and keep trying.
Thank you so much. And if there's any way you can bring in the mayor of the city for the corner of Rainville, you know, just to kinda get Paquonic Road, which is a major artery to EB, as we look at economic development, making sure that we're, we're doing our best to scream that we need help with connectivity and making sure it's safe for walking.
I'll take another look at it.
Thank you. Council Parker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Can you remind me, aren't, isn't the town in charge of roads? And we work with the highway departments to do the roads, correct? So, part of the Paquonic, she's talking about, Blueberry, in the Blueberry Hill, it doesn't, does it have to go through them? She mentioned the mayor. Does it go through a different process when you're doing roads? 'Cause I know it goes past the school a little bit. And half the roads in the town of Groton do not have sidewalks, so. And they are some state roads. Sorry, I'm starting to lose my voice here. So, is there a special process? Mr. Hanover, I don't know if you can answer that question, or Mr. Burke can answer that question?
I could say if there's anything with a state road, the Traffic Authority has to make a request. They won't consider it, but anything else would just be standard work.
So, but it works in conjunction with doing roads. We, right, 'cause it's budget season, and we
Right.
anticipate and plan, both sides plan for roads to be done, if I'm thinking correctly. Right?
Yes.
Thank you. I just, oh.
Thank you. Council Bordelon?
Yeah, I mean, what I'm stating is, is that we are the daily users of these roads. And when state roads fall within our municipality, it is our duty as elected officials, as with citizens of the town, that you contact your local elected officials, like we're doing here. People have come to me, I've noticed things, you know, myself. But we then relay that on to our town manager, who can, you know, present that to his, you know, Public Works Department. And, you know, you say things like, you know, "We're a little concerned there's no sidewalks," or, you know, things here. That is normal chain of command type things. It's not saying anyone did anything wrong. It's just that you're being a good steward and, and exercising your right to communicate with the state. These sidewalks that are missing are not something that, just because it's a new budget year, that, that doesn't change anything. These have been like this probably for about four to five budget years, if they were even put on there at all. I don't believe they were. On the city side, on the city side of the state road of Paquonic Road, there's a button on a side of the road with no sidewalk. It's on a ledge, hill, no sidewalk going up Rainville, and no sidewalk on that side of the road whatsoever, but there's a button. And then they didn't put it in a sidewalk. On the other end of the town side of the state road, there's buttons, there's the lights, and just no sidewalk. So, you know, it's our duty, our duty as a community to relay those to our town officials, because when a town manager, or a, a mayor, or a, you know, Traffic Authority Department writes a short letter to the state just expressing a concern, it gets the attention. So, that's what I was asking, just, you know, as a, it's no pointing of the finger, it's more of just being a kind of good steward to our town. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right. I'm seeing none, so I'll call for a vote on $75,000. Council Cassiri?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Franco?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Melendez is a yes. McBride?
Yes.
Bordelon? You're muted?
Yes.
Okay. Westerville?
Yes.
Jacome?
Yes.
All right, I have nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. On to 3C. Page 215. I'll make a motion for $230,000.
Second, Cassiri.
Okay, this is our infill sidewalk construction. This is for our annual request for funding to install new sidewalks where currently none exist, to provide connectivity between existing sidewalks or two important nodes. Previous years, we've gotten fundings for sidewalks along Route 1, which were currently in review with DOT, so will hopefully be starting construction very soon from Route 117 up towards South Road along the north side of Route 1, and then also up by Bridge Street. For this year, I have asked for 230,000 for two sections of town. The first is 100,000 along Paquonic Plains Park, from the entrance to Paquonic Plain to the gas station by Ring Drive on the north side. There's currently no sidewalk there now. So, this would just kind of meander through the trees there. There is a drainage head wall and some wetlands there, we have to be cognizant of, but, but that's what that funds for, are for. The other sidewalk section would be, what is it, 130,000 for Groton Long Point Road from Elm Street, which is near the Amtrak Railroad Bridge along the west side of that road down to the Esker Point Beach. You see a lot of people walking along there. There's a gravel shoulder, if you will, behind the curb that obviously gets used extensively by the residents in that area. So, we wanna, you know, put a concrete sidewalk in that area.
All right. Council Bordelon?
Um, hi, yes. I, I do think this is extremely important. I have seen residents out in front of Paquonic Plains Park where the button is, which is wonderful. You got a button, you got, you know, we have a sidewalk on certain sections, definitely down where those buttons are. And, you know, we're gonna be having some reconstruction done down there. We had the, the road guy come not that long ago. And in the winter, when one was trying to come from the school, you know, walk to the gas station, they have to cross, to cross back over. 'Cause as was stated by Greg, there's no, no sidewalk on that stretch, which really hinders safety. And as we grow that road and looking at development, or, you know, this big, you know, sports complex and all the other amenities that we're, we're hoping to have on that area, and for the sake of the folks in Paquonic Village over there, we, we really need to make sure that you have safety on either side. After the road was plowed, I saw a woman with a stroller, I don't know which area she was coming from, but she's on the side where there's no sidewalk, using her right away to push the button across. And cars were, you know, with the snow embankments, were right on top of her. There was no defined plowed area for her to be. So, definitely a safety concern, that's a major artery. And, you know, when you come into the town and connectivity, again, it would be an asset to have sidewalks definitely in that vicinity. Again, we, we did the complete streets, as well as, you know, we talked about, you know, after COVID, or during COVID, folks got out more and were walking, and the need for outside abilities to cut down on, you know, your carbon footprint or go for a leisurely walk. And you should feel safe and not have to worry about what side of the road you're on to cross here preemptively, just to be able to bypass where no sidewalk is, is kind of counterproductive. Thank you.
Thank you. Council McBride?
Thank you. I just, once again, wanna reiterate, I'm in favor of the roads, the drainage, and the sidewalks, but I am, have questions on the financing. And I don't think I was clear enough earlier, I just wanna give an example of how this could be funded for future years for this council to discuss. Sometimes how municipalities work is they don't go bond the entire project at, at the initial step. What they'll do is they'll issue bands, which are bond anticipation notes for the cost. And this project is something that would be considered, could be considered next year. Because what you would do is you would issue the bands, which are, which are interest-only payments for a few years. You would go out for bands the second year, which would be interest-only. And then you would go out and you'd refinance those bands into bonds, along with the substantial cost of the project upon its completion. So, in this example, '24, we could issue bands, interest-only. '25, we would issue bands, interest-only. And then '26, we could issue a bond with a referendum and so forth. But that way, the financial costs and the total cost of the project would be borne by the citizens over the 20 or 30 years that the sidewalk's construction, because it's construction, that would last. So, I just wanted to reiterate it, I don't think I explained that earlier, but something for possibly the council to consider in the future is just how these projects, how these longer-term projects are financed. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Franco?
I think we, we, previous councils have absolutely discussed this and fully understand it. And it, it's sort of like, I don't know how else to say it, but it's like, it has to be explained to me how it works. I don't think that's a necessity. And I, I sort of take it as an affront, that as if people on here don't understand how bonding works, or possibilities of how bonding works. And if, if that's something you would like to do, you can bring it forward as a refer, a referral item, and have the full discussion at the council, I think. But to continually bring it up when a council has already voted that this is how we're going to do, going forward on it, it, I just don't think it's necessary. Thank you.
Council Bordelon?
Thank you, yeah. I think bonding is actually very important, in, in the sense that we do, I did not think that, when we talked about it, when I was on the council, that it was a blanket thing for everything. I think it was a way of life at the time. As we know, many councils before us, and councils currently, and many that after, change is why there's different members up here. And so, Council McBride brings a form of different change, an idea that's unique than, I'll speak for myself, much more unique than me, that I appreciate. And I think what he brings is a suggestion, and as a good council of, you know, good stewardship here, we should seek to, wanna listen and understand when a new councillor comes on. They earn their seat, they have a right to bring their opinion. What was done in the past, as we learned, the past doesn't always predict what the future should be. Sometimes the past actually is not, wasn't maybe done correctly sometimes, or it needs to be relooked at, so.
This has nothing to do with a budget item at all.
Oh, it does.
Nothing at all. Nothing at all. Point of order.
Okay, hold on a second. Hold on a second. We're gonna calm down. Council Bordelon? Can you put your comments on to the item, not necessarily what other councillors have said? Okay.
Yep. And so, when looking at bonding, what we should be asking is, how come?
Right. This isn't, this isn't bonding. We're not bonding.
We're talking about how to fund this.
We have $230,000.
Right, we have $230,000 on the floor.
Are you putting on a, is she, point of order?
No.
Point of information.
Counsel, I'm, I'm already ruling on a point of order. Council Bordelon? We have a motion for $230,000. We're not discussing, the, the, the funding for this, the way it is, is through our normal process. There's, there's no motion to fund this through bonding at all?
I'm aware.
Okay, so there should be really no discussion about bonding, as of right now?
I would just ask for fairness, then, other councillors went on in great length about how other councillors voted one way or not.
I understand, I understand, I understand. But what you, what I'm, what I'm saying is, you, you started.
Just ask for the same respect.
Council Bordelon? Let me finish. You began discussing what Counsel Franco and Counsel McBride had said to each other, and how you agree that you should listen to new councillors, and that's really not about this budget item.
It's about this budget item, because what was, so I'm voting on a number tonight, because it's being stated that councillors made a decision in the past. And I asked the town manager then, "Are we not coming before the council 'cause we're using old votes from the past as to how we should move forward?" That's my question.
My opinion is, at this point, it's too late to do bonding for right now, in terms of approving it in the budget. It should be a referral for, I think it could be a great discussion.
Yeah. Right, so we were never asked. Okay, so, we're using, so I guess I'm trying to understand, 'cause I was part of that council, and we have a whole different council, there's only a few of us that have returned. I'm just trying to understand why, in the past, they would ask us if we wanted to bond or not bond, and it was not a referral item that had to be referred. It was part of the budget discussion when you asked the councillors what directions we could go. So, anyway, I do think that we have more to discuss on that then, but we only have what we have today. And for that, I will probably abstain today, because I feel unclear as a direction, and I definitely don't wanna be voting on items that are under assumptions, or things that are, you know, numbers that, you know, were previous directions when we moved into a different direction. Thank you.
Mayor, just to point out, only roads and bridges have we ever talked about bonding, none of these type of things.
Thank you. All right. Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, I'll call for a vote on $230,000. Council Cassiri?
Yes.
Counsel Parker?
Yes.
Franco?
Yep.
Jones?
Yes.
Melendez is yes. McBride?
Abstaining.
Bordelon?
I'm abstaining.
Westerville?
Yes.
Jacome?
Yes.
I have seven in favor, zero opposed, two abstaining, Bordelon, McBride.
Can we take five?
Sure. Councils stand in recess at 7:45.
I made a mess.
Thank you. Councils back from recess at 7:57. And we are on to CIP 4A. That's on page 216.
I'll move 90,000.
Second, Parker.
I have a motion from Cassiri for 90,000, second by Parkland.
Good evening. Mark Berry, Director of Parks and Recreation. Joining me this evening is Ben Morse, who is the new manager of Recreation Services. Ben asked if he could tag along, and I said, be careful what you ask for.
Totally see you on that TV.
So, the first project is 4A for $90,000, and this is to install a GeoGrid along a portion of the Paquonic Plains parking lot. A GeoGrid, for those of you that may not be familiar, it's big sheets of plastic, open plastic squares that would get laid down on the ground, and they get filled with an aggregate, and they work to better filter and drain water. As everybody's aware, I'm sure you've all been in the past Paquonic Plains parks before, and it's flooded all the way across the parking lot. This will help to address a portion of the issue.
I can't hear on the mic, I'm sorry.
Yes, yes.
Nope.
Try that one.
Try the other one.
Good evening. Mark Berry, Director of Parks and Recreation. So, what would happen is the parking lot where the GeoGrid is going to go would get excavated. The GeoGrid would go in, we'd lay down an aggregate, and it would help with the drainage. And this is actually in conjunction with a grant that was submitted by our resiliency manager. It's a climate resiliency fund that she applied for. Part of this work would include what she had included in her proposal, and that was looking at creating like a bioswale, or actually a giant garden, rain garden, in that area adjacent to the parking lot. So, this is kind of a combined approach to try to address the flooding that occurs in that area every time we have a substantial rainfall.
Thank you. Any discussion? Counselor Borlon?
Thank you for your efforts. You know, that's always been a flood area, even back when that used to be the carnival that was there. That's, it's really on a, like a marshy wetland over there, so it's, you know, it's no fault of the area for flooding the way that it does. It's just unfortunate because we're trying to use it as a park, but I'm just, I'm a little shocked that there was no implementation of any plans to treat that area, knowing that that area has flooded for long as I can remember. So, I do appreciate your efforts in seeking some form of a way to help. The plastic, though, from an environmental standpoint, has that got any ramifications? Has that been fully vetted or kind of checked to see if microplastics or anything else will be coming off of that? Or what happens as those break down? Does the plastic then go into the soil? I just have some questions as to the structure of those.
I'm not aware of any microplastic study. Yes, there probably will be some breakdown. You know, using a material that is biodegradable would kind of defeat the purpose of putting in something that's going to hold up over time. And at some point, I'm sure that that, it would have to be replaced, but maybe at that point, we'll have come up with a better solution. We're just trying to address a situation that's been ongoing for quite a while.
Roy, I can understand that you need, you know, you don't want something that's going to biodegrade away, but I'm just wondering, is this, what other options were presented when you guys sought options for remediating the drainage issue?
This was the option that was presented and discussed with the engineering division. I'm not aware of other options.
And was, sometimes, you know, an engineering, you know, place with supplemental and one if not asked. How does our environmental, you know, the person we have on board now, how does she feel about the plastic? Has she been brought into this? I know you talked about the rain garden, but what's her stance on the implementation of these devices?
She is well aware of this proposed project. She actually collaborated with us when she was writing her grant, and this, the money that's proposed as this part of the project was part of what was presented to the grant as the town's commitment to try and address the flooding issue that's taking place there.
Thank you. And what is the cost? I guess, you know, one, you know, just in case the grants were ever to run out or we weren't able to get them again, what's the cost to, what's the life on these, and what is the cost to the town to replace them?
The cost to replace this would likely be the cost that the council is voting on this evening.
Okay, and my other question?
Your other question was, I'm sorry?
How long do these devices last?
I believe they have a 10- or 20-year lifespan.
Thank you for your research and efforts to try to help the area. Thank you.
Councillor Cassiri?
Thank you. Hi, Director Berry. So, the flooding issue there, are we looking at the entire flooding issue, not just like the parking area and that very front section, or is this going to help with the fields flooding as well?
Hopefully, it will have some positive impact to the fields. There is a larger issue, you know, with the fields particularly, that they all slope towards that one corner by the, by the mobile gas station.
Right.
So, that, you know, when the fields were originally built, they probably, when you build a field, usually you try to crown it so that the water flows. And for whatever reason, when these fields were built, that was not done.
Okay. Because I hear a lot from the youth sports groups that it's unfortunate that we have to cancel practice a lot, so I was just curious if this was going to help with the field issues.
Hopefully, it will help. I'm not going to say it will solve it, but hopefully, it will help to some degree.
Okay, great. I hope so, too. Thank you.
Counselor Westerveld?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Berry. I may have misheard you, but I just want to know, is there an element of bioswells in this or just the mesh?
No, this is just the mesh. There is a grant that is out there now that we're waiting to hear back on that would look at doing a study of creating a bioswale kind of in the area between Route 1 and the parking lot. So, that area, we would look at actually kind of creating this, a marsh, if you will, just to help absorb all that water so that it doesn't spill, you know, continue onto the parking lot and onto the playing fields also.
No, I'm very familiar with bioswells. I was just curious if that was part of this, but thank you very much.
Any further discussion? I'm seeing none. So, I'll call for a vote on $90,000. Councillor Cassiri?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Franco?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Melendez is yes. McBride?
Yes.
Borlon?
Yes.
Westerveld?
Yes.
Jakome?
Yes.
I have nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. All right. On to 4B, Community Connectivity Program, page 217.
Make the motion for $40,000.
Second.
Second.
Okay, I got a motion by councillor Parker, a second by Jones for $40,000.
So, this project is to conduct, to build, construct a stone dust path that would connect from the Thrive parking lot near the ice rink, near the hockey rink, from the hockey rink, from the lot, so when I think hockey rinks, I think ice. So, it would connect from the hockey rink, go out behind the library field, and also continue out behind the library and circle back towards and connect back to the Thrive parking lot. So, essentially, it would be kind of creating this loop with also a spur that would go out behind the library and connect to, there's a paved sidewalk that kind of comes in from the side of the library. And the reason that we're proposing this is community connectivity is the number-one need that people have identified in both the 2020 Needs Assessment and the 2023 Needs Assessment. And it would also allow, it creates an opportunity for those seniors that are bust to thrive. We have a number of walking programs to encourage people to stay active. It gives them more space to walk. A lot of them can't, we don't bus folks over to Paquonic Plains Park, so this would be a location adjacent to Thrive, and it also provides an opportunity for folks that are watching their kids, or if their kids are practicing, they've got a track that they can kind of walk around while their kids are practicing or playing on the field.
Thank you. Councillor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Mr. Berry. I like this idea a lot. I, you know, have used the track inside of Thrive 55, the tenth of a mile, and you can, you have to walk around 10 times to get your exercise if it's raining, but this is a really nice addition for people who can't drive or are a bust there, and I think it just expands our walking. Is it the same width of what you're doing or planning to have the same width as what you're doing at Paquonic Plains?
Yes, we are expanding the path at Paquonic Plains, and this would be...
So, you can use that same tractor element that you use to keep it, so we can do all the maintenance in-house and keep that, and keep that going. Yeah, no, I think this is a great idea, and I've seen the work you've done at Paquonic Plains and on expanding that, and it's, you know, it's, you're doing a really nice job there with it, so I'm pretty confident this will be a nice path also for everybody to walk, so.
Thank you. Councillor Cassiri?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Did you say that the path was going to go behind the library field?
Yes.
Is there a...
It's going to be tight.
I was going to say, it's very tight there right now.
Yep.
Because as we've talked about, I coach youth soccer, so is it going like right up to the field? Because there's also issues with the bushes back there, too. They're very overgrown, and that probably is playing into it a little bit.
Right, and that's, I think that's where we're going to pick up most of our, I'm sorry, I don't have the plans right in front of me to tell you the distance.
Okay. Because in my head right now, it's the, the space between the field and the bushes is very minimal, to the point where I had to reach out to the town manager at one point to ask that they be cut back because there was poison ivy, and the kids were reaching back and touching it.
Right, right.
It's very minimal space there right now, so as long as you're confident that it will fit there, then, but I'm just...
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we had the engineers from Public Works came up with the plans, and I'm sure that if there was an issue with it being too close to the fields, we wouldn't have pushed this forward.
Sure, as well.
And I think we'll, we'll gain space by cutting the brush back right to the fence line.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Counselor Borlon?
Thank you. I think this sounds exciting for, you know, having a shorter outdoor track for folks that maybe can't walk Paquonic Plains, and definitely for, you know, the folks, the elderly, disabled, or anybody that's using the library, or the senior center, or anybody who just wants to use it and, you know, doesn't necessarily want to be, you know, Paquonic Plains for whatever reason. Will there be, you know, does this include any benches in that area so folks can sit down, or?
Great question. Yes, it will include benches.
Great. Thank you. That's, I think, an awesome asset, and, you know, I think with the pro and sale going there and, you know, everything there, it kind of makes it, you know, a little one-stop-shop of things to do, and I like the fact that you're doing the crushed stone and not...
And I like the fact that you're doing the crushed stone and not concrete, kind of keeping it, you know, keeping with the, you know, porous surfaces that can, you know, help continue to, you know, absorb water and stuff. And if ever it needs to be reconverted back, it's a simple reconvert than, you know, kind of ripping up concrete or whatever else, you know, you may put down for walk space. So I'm excited to see what happens with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All right. I'm seeing none, so I'll call for a vote on $40,000. Councilor Casiri?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Franco?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Melendez is a yes. McBride?
Yes.
Bordelon?
Yes.
Jacome?
Yes.
I have nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. On to 4C, Golf Course Improvement Plan, page 218.
I'll make a move, the amount of $129,000 for CIP 4C.
Franco, second.
Okay. So I have a motion by Jacome and a second by Franco.
This project is part of the ongoing plan to continue renovations to the golf course. Most of the work that's taking place is in the bunkers. And what happens, for those of you that, well, play and don't play golf, what happens is the ball goes into the bunker, and as players are trying to get out of the bunker, the bunker's filled with sand, and what ends up happening is particularly the face of the bunker slowly starts to build up with sand as you take two or three whacks at trying to get the ball out of the bunker. And over the course of time, that bunker that originally was, say, two feet deep, now is four to five feet deep, and I see a lot of shaking heads. So what ends, you know, so what ends up happening is it's just, it's more and more difficult to get out of the bunker. It slows down the pace of play, which is something that all golf courses are aware of and try to address. And it's also just a frustration level. So we, a number of years ago, came up with a plan. We didn't do it. It was actually, a consultant came in and made some recommendations to improve all the bunkers on the course. This, Eric Morrison could tell you the number of bunkers, but there's a lot of bunkers on this course, and so we're just slowly going through the process of trying to address all of those bunkers that need work.
Thank you. Councilor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and, Mr. Barry, we, Councilor Jacome and I, this afternoon, went and toured these bunkers and the facilities. Mr. Morris was terrific and gave us a great tour, and pointed out, which I didn't really understand before going, why they need to be replaced, but some of them have grown, the sides have grown two feet just from over the years, and some of the bunkers that you're replacing, I think from last year's, are over 100 years old. So they've been there for a long, long time. And not only does that, but also includes some of the grass areas and things, so he was pretty good at explaining all the different features of these bunkers, and some need drainage, some don't, some filled with water, there's all kinds of different problems that are there. So I think this is a nice improvement and part of a continual program to bring the golf course up that has been such a great asset to our community.
Yeah. And, you know, when the course was originally designed, the number of rounds was probably around 10,000, and now we're seeing over 30,000 rounds. So, you know, maintaining the tees, you know, the tee boxes and all of that requires more and more work because we're seeing more play.
Thank you. Councilor Jacome?
No, I'll reaffirm Councilor Jones's statement that walking around, you just, you do see the bunkers and the tees and the degraded state that they're in, so. And I think the way this is kind of staggered, we did talk to Eric as well, we kind of did mention that the reason it's staggered here is it's so, it's not over, you know, five, is it, five or 10 years or more, because by the time you do get to that point, you have to do the entire golf course again, and it's just constantly happening. So I will be in support of this CIP. Thank you.
Councilor McBride?
Thank you. I just have some financial questions. I'm a supporter of golf. I play. I'm terrible, but I do love the course and like to play. But my question is more from the 30,000-foot level in that I look at this and I see $3.6 million of costs over the next five years for improvements to this facility, and then I look at, we spent almost 1.2 in ARPA funds for this facility, too. So my questions are more from the higher level, like what percentage of Groton residents play at the course? Because I feel like we're spending, we spent a lot of money, and we're going to continue to spend a lot of money, and I just feel like, you know, I'm trying to find out what percentage of the residents utilize this facility, because it's a big nut that we're moving forward. Not this 129, but just trying to get a feeling of who uses it and, you know, what percentage of Groton residents use it versus outside residents, you know, kind of trying to get that kind of feel.
I don't know that I could give you a specific percentage, you know, like 35% is Groton residents, and because when they're coming in off the street, they put their credit card down and four guys go play golf. So, you know, we don't ask them where they're from. We may capture that information. Every two years, we do a satisfaction survey, so we may capture that information when we, if we have their, if they've provided their email address. We ask that question, but I don't recall off the top of my head the number, the percentage of people from Groton that play. I can tell you from that same satisfaction survey that we, one of the questions that we ask is how much do you spend when you come to play at Shenacasa? And annually, that's about $400,000 between all the players that come, you know, some are traveling a great distance, others are just driving over from Ledger, they're not spending as much. But on average, the course brings in through meals, gas, and hotels about $400,000 a year, and that's been consistent over the last two or three satisfaction surveys that we do. So over the last six to eight years, that number has been consistent.
Okay, that's good information. Thank you. I'm going to support this and move forward. I just, I'm wondering if I'm going to consider maybe making a referral to the council just to consider if, has it ever been looked at in the past in terms of whether this should be leased out or whether it should be sold and put on tax rolls? Not that I'm in favor of that, I'm just saying, it's just millions of dollars that we're spending, and I feel like I don't know what percentage of the population is getting that benefit.
Sold, you mean the property sold to, say, built houses?
Or leased out to an agency where we would collect revenue and make money out of it versus paying for the capital improvements.
Just to make an order of sale, it's not permitted. There's restrictions due to grant dollars.
Okay.
You'd have to trade as much land and value within the town to get, to be able to sell that, so.
So sale's not out of the option?
You can't sell it.
Okay. All right, I just may look into whether it's worth it to have an outside agency run it. I'm just, I feel like we maintain it operationally, it seems like, day to year, but the capital improvements are getting quite substantial, and it's, you know, it's hitting all the taxpayers, instead of just those that are using it. But I support it, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Councilor Bordelon?
Can you bond on golf courses for projects over a period of time? John?
Yeah, I'm sure you can. They don't have the money to pay those CIPs, it'd still be the town, though.
Right, but I'm just, I'm just piggybacking off of just the thought from before that, you know, if this is a long-term asset, you know, there could be a benefit to bonding on something like the golf course in the sense where it's always needing repair. Now, it's like anything, that's important, and if we're going to have it, you want it maintained. My question, though, for our tracking, we don't really have like a proper register in our clubhouse or anything like, what do we use? How do people pay? That's my first question.
People pay by cash, by credit card. We do have a registration software that people can sign up online to book their tee times.
Okay, so everything is on, online and accounted, so you could track. And then my question is, you said people just throw down a credit card. I mean, other places I go, they ask what town you're from, so they add that into the fee.
I don't, well, I don't think I've ever been asked what town I'm from when I'm paying for gasoline or anything, but I could be wrong.
When you're using a golf course, because, I mean, I thought we had a differentiation in price if you're a town or non-town resident. So if I throw my card down and I'm a resident and I'm paying for all four, I'd have to disclose non-resident, resident, non-resident. I just think that we need to be capturing that, because it would just be so easy that I would just walk up and pay for everybody, because I'm a resident.
I could certainly speak to them about keeping track of resident and non-residents.
Sure.
Because if, can I finish my time?
Mr. Morrison? You still have time. Mr. Morrison was going to answer your question.
So yes, we have resident and non-resident rate structure. Obviously, people who are residents know, and they will tell the person at the counter that they're resident, Groton will get the resident rate. Our point-of-sale system obviously can spit out reports as to how many resident members we have versus non-resident members, and how many tickets we sell daily, whether it's resident or non-resident. Those reports can be generated.
Thank you. Councilor Bordelon, you have a minute 53 remaining.
Thank you. Yeah, I think that'd be great to pull that data and maybe have it at another meeting. I think it would be important, so I guess what you're saying is, is when they show up, everyone's charged non-resident unless they disclose they're resident, and then they show their ID. Is that how we operate, or?
That's correct. We have no way to tell unless they let us know, so.
Well, you, other golf courses I've been to, they ask for your ID.
Correct. Every golf course is, you know, they're not, we're not checking IDs for every person to see. Every golfer knows that a municipal course is going to have a resident rate, so they're keen into that, and they will disclose that when they're paying.
Gotcha.
They'll also ask for, do you have a military discount? You know, they ask for every discount possible. It's almost like, some people, we need to actually pay them to play the course.
Yeah. I think, piggybacking off what Councilor McBride was saying about, you know, who's this golf course serving, that's why I'm hoping to seek, you know, more ability for, you know, I know Mark Barry said it's a three-tiered thing where we need, you know, practice and training as well to get people onto the course, but I think we should definitely be having that affordable play line, which is equal to military and low-income military and seniors to try to appeal to a diverse population. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Morrison, do you have anything further to add?
I do not. Sorry about that.
No, you're good. Thank you. Any further discussion? Councilor Jacome?
Just one last question. It did, you did say you do a survey every two years, I don't know if it's for Mr. Morrison or Director Barry. What were some of the things you did see that were, need to be improved at the course from the golfers?
Bunkers have been historically the area identified as needing the most improvement.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilor Bordelon?
Oh, thank you. You know, down the road, our pro shop is not, they don't pay rent to utilize this space, is that correct?
That is correct.
Yeah, that's a good deal. You know, so they're selling, we don't get a cost of the sales of the items in there?
That is correct.
Yeah, that's a bit of concern since we pay, restaurant pays, and I'm just looking at the revenues and looking at these bunkers.
Councilor Bordelon?
Yeah, I'll keep it, yep, got it.
The golf shop isn't on this item.
I'm, but the money is, and how do we support it?
No.
So what I'm speaking to is the cost of, to keep, maintain these bunkers, we should be looking at other ways of income drivers, and that pro shop would be one of them.
That's a line item, that's a different budget item.
Yeah.
Right. We're really just discussing the funds to improve the bunkers.
Right. And I'm just thinking, a way to improve them would be to collect some money on that. But anyway, I'll support this today, but I do think that we need to be looking at these drivers of other avenues that we have at our disposal to make sure we're fully trying to get the funding we need. I also had brought up about making sure it was identified, not only the building, but the course, it's a historic, and I know you said there were some things, but I'd love to talk at some point about that as well. I think it's important to, if we're going to have it, we have to maintain it, but I do have some concerns and to the town manager, when should we disclose or discuss bonding in relation to golf maintenance, if we need to do?
That's, he has already said, that's a referral item.
Okay. Manager Bur, you can answer the question.
Yeah, it'd just be a referral from a counselor.
Like, how many months before the budget, so we're prepared?
Bonding is not part of this?
Councilor Bordelon? Okay, so if we could just remain on task, I believe that the manager says he starts his budget process in October, November, so if you can make a referral for next year's budget sometime before then, that would be helpful.
Cool.
But if we can really talk about, you know, the 129,000 for this year...
Yeah, I, for the 129,000, I just think we got to seek ways of, finding ways to fund that on different avenues. You know, we do need to be bringing in some revenue somewhere, and did we seek any grants from the state for this?
No, not for this work.
Have we ever tried to get some grants for the golf course?
Well, if you recall, we had just received the grant towards the restroom from the state. However, I do not, I do not know of any grants out there that would help pay for general upkeep for this type of item.
We use ARPA fund for the restroom, too, and so depending on, is there any leftover money that could be applied to this if it is leftover?
We won't know in time for this budget. It could certainly be used for a future item, if there was any leftover.
Okay. Right. Okay, that'd be good to think about. You'll come back to us with that, then. We double allocated for the bathrooms, so I'm just wondering if there's extra, I'm debating if I should support the 120 and why we, you know, where the money, the extra money could, could it roll into this if needed?
With asbestos and those other items involved...
Point of order.
What's the point of order?
We are not on topic. We just went on topic about ARPA and restrooms. We need to stick on the bunkers. That is what we're supposed to be doing at this point, discussing 4C, $129,000 for fiscal year 2024.
That's correct. Councilor Bordelon, please stay on the budget item.
Or 129, I'm just seeking other revenues on how we can support that and not put it onto the taxpayer fully. So, any and all suggestions prior to the budget, and any time the manager has a way to, you know, bring us on board with suggestions prior to, without a referral, would be helpful as well. Thank you.
Councilor McBride?
I just have a point of clarification. When I said earlier 1.1, it was actually 1.7 last year ARPA funding for the golf course, but more importantly, I just want a point of clarification.
Point of order. We're not talking about ARPA funds. We need to talk about what this budget item is.
He was correcting something that he said previously. Councilor...
And that's the next point I was going to get to. I, correct me if I'm wrong, Manager Bur, but this chart that we have in front of us, and I'm not in support of this, I just want clarity on process. We have the ability to put funding in Capital Reserve Fund, to put it in the General Obligation Fund, which is that column in front of us, or into another category, which is where ARPA was used last year. So I think this council, I'm not in favor of it, I'm just saying, in future budgets, that's why this column is here. This council can make the decision to put anything in this Capital Reserve Fund into a General Obligation Fund for next year's issuance. Is that correct?
Correct. It just can't do it on the fly. It would have to be for a future budget, if you're going to change it, but like for bonding levels type things, but correct. When we had bonding funds available prior for roads, it would be in there as bonding, you know, so you'd flag that. But you have to have the money available at the, you know, at the time, so you wouldn't have right now for it.
So this is more for future approvals?
Right. Discussion for future years, yeah.
Thank you.
A point of information?
Sure.
I remember in years past, we had some, I forget the name of the money, and I'm trying to look through my old budget book here.
Lozen.
Lozen. When do we start using those?
We don't have any available this year. We only get a small amount each year. We had built it up for a few years for a couple of things prior, but it's all already called for for this year. called for, for this year. So next year, we might get another, I forget what we, maybe two-hundred thousand a year, or next year we might get, but we have none available for this year.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, thank you for clarifying.
Any further discussion? Okay. I'm seeing, so I'll call for a vote on one hundred twenty-nine thousand dollars. Counsel Cassiri?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Franco?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Melendez is yes. McBride?
Yes.
Borlon?
Yes.
Westerville?
Yes.
Jacome?
Yes.
I have nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. Thank you. All right. On to four D, Park Investments, ADA Compliance, page two nineteen.
I'll make a motion for a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars.
Second, Parker.
Second.
Okay, so I've got a motion by Cassiri and a second by, uh, Parker for a hundred and thirty-five thousand.
This project is to bring Calvin Borough's concession stand and bathroom up to ADA compliance. Uh, we had an architect go through and look at, uh, the facilities, identified all of those areas that are not in compliance and came up with a cost estimate to make the necessary changes in order to make it compliant. Uh, just one, for instance, the service window that currently exists is too high, so somebody in a wheelchair, um, it has to be lowered by, Greg, was it sixteen inches? Yeah. Uh, it has to be lowered by sixteen inches. Uh, the, the changes need to be made in the bathrooms, stalls, grab bars. Um, this is part of, uh, an ongoing project, process that the department has been going through. A couple of years ago, we made renovations to, uh, the bathhouse at Escarpoint Beach. Uh, so we're, we're trying to, you know, slowly go through and, and make all the necessary changes that were identified in a study that was done in two thousand and twelve.
Thank you, Counsel Parker.
Um, Mr. Berry, you just, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, you just said something about the surface area. Is that outside at the concession stand or are you talking about within the restroom area?
No, I was speaking to, there's a, a service window where you, uh, would go up and place your order.
All right, so.
It, it's too high. If you're sitting in a wheelchair, it, it's too high. It, it needs to be lowered in order to make it compliant.
I'm sorry, only because it's not within the description. So I just wanted to make sure that this is, the hundred and thirty-five thousand is part of the front of where the concession stand is and the restrooms at the same time?
That is correct.
Okay, so it just doesn't say that in the instruct, in the request?
I added that as kind of an example.
Oh, okay. I just want to confirm. Thank you.
Any further discussion? All right, so I'm seeing none, so I'll call for a vote on one hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. Counsel Cassiri?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Franco?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Melendez is yes. Um, McBride?
Yes.
Borlon?
Yes.
Westerville?
Yes.
Jacome?
Yes.
I have nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. On to four H, Knowank Neighborhood Park, page two twenty-one.
This is phase one of a two, oh, I'm sorry.
Let me just put the motion on the floor. One second, sorry. My fault. Um, I'll make a motion for one hundred twenty-five thousand dollars.
Second, Westerville.
Second.
Okay, so I got a motion by Melendez and a second by Westerville. All right, there you go.
Sorry. This is phase one of a two-phase project to take the former Knowank school property and construct it into, uh, the Knowank Community Park. Uh, work in this particular phase would include earthwork. Uh, there's a large open space, uh, the field, that open space, the field is in really poor condition. There's very little top soil. Um, so this project would include improving that, uh, also creating paved and stone dust paths, fencing around the community garden. Uh, the existing fencing was constructed, uh, prior to the Parks and Recreation Department taking it over, and it's, um, in really poor condition, uh, and needs to be replaced. Uh, it also includes, uh, putting in landscaping, which would be trees and ornamental grasses. Uh, and also, there is an existing paved roadway, that was part of the layout when it was a school, and it would involve removing that also. Uh, we have gone to, uh, Knowank Planning and Zoning. There was a public meeting. Their firehouse was packed full of people to hear what we were proposing, and it has been approved by the Knowank, um, planning and, or, planning and zoning within Knowank.
Very good. Thank you. Any discussion? Counsel Cassiri?
I'm going to move another number.
Sure.
Zero dollars.
Second, Franco.
I got a motion by Counsel Cassiri and a second by Counsel Franco for zero dollars.
I, uh, I just think we've funded a lot of other park projects, and I think this can wait at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Borlon?
Yeah, this would have been another, uh, item that ARPA could have been used for. Um, John, is there any other grants? Have we applied for anything? Is this, like, where has this been on our needs list?
I, I don't know of any other grants currently for this. I imagine, you know, maybe in the, we just recently received, the number's not that long ago. You could potentially ask for a future state grant, maybe through the bond commission, which potentially might be kind of small for them, but they might do it. We've also asked for the, uh, rowing building at Spicer. Um, outside of that, though, I don't think, we don't have anything else. Do you, Mark, besides potentially the state bond?
There was a grant, I don't, it was the, uh, I want to say Recreation Trails, but it wasn't Recreation Trails. It was the, uh, it was a different grant, but I don't think Groton was, was eligible, um, due to the restraints of the grant. Um, I mean, we could certainly keep our eyes open for potential grants. Generally, though, there's a, a match, and it's either, you know, fifty percent or, or twenty percent. So, um, you know, we have, the, the council has done this in the past, particularly in the area of trails, is they've set aside money to be used as a match. Uh, so that, throwing that out as a possibility.
Yeah, that would be great. I mean, it would be great if we knew what the match was. Um, I just hope that we always seek that first and, you know, in, in these CIPs, it's nice if the information states that, you know, we tried this, this, and this, and that's why we're asking for this, you know. Um, you know, ARPA didn't get used, this didn't get used, all the exhaustion of everything, um, just really kind of helping to expand. Um, yeah, I'm, I'm not sure I stand on this one. I, I definitely support that something needs to be done. This amount here only does what, phase one? Is that correct?
That is correct.
What, in the total cost, how many phases? Let me look.
There was two phases. Uh, one is for a hundred and twenty-five thousand, one is for a hundred and twenty-seven, so that would be two-hundred-and-fifty-two thousand dollars.
So that would be the grant that you would seek, would be the full amount for that initially, wouldn't it, if you tried?
Yes, we always ask for the maximum. Uh, again, there's usually a match. Um, so if there was, if we didn't have money to match, then we couldn't even bother applying for the grant.
Right.
And each grant, the match is different.
Yeah, I just like to exhaust all those options first before putting the burden fully on the, on the, on the, you know, town taxpayer. Um, but, I, I'll, I'll think about this one. Thank you.
I just wanted to point out that Parks Rec, if you, I'm sure we all know how many grants have come through here that they've obtained. They do a phenomenal job applying for getting grants.
Thank you. Counsel Jones?
Um, Mr. Berry, just a question. Do we, and, and applying for grants, do we need to have the money set aside to match it beforehand, or can we, I mean, we just did a grant for the, the bike route where we, we added the money afterwards after you received the grant? Can we do it?
We could, yes.
Can you do it that way?
We could, I could come back to the council and say, you know, we, uh, we're applying for this grant and the council needs, would need to commit to a certain amount of money.
But we just, we just did the bike?
Yeah.
One, and we hadn't, we didn't even know that was coming. It just sort of popped up and, and we were able to come up with the funds for that. So we could do it in that, that manner. If you received the grant, we could come up with the, we could come up with the matching funds.
I wouldn't want to go through the exercise of applying for the grant before knowing that the town was going to commit to the money. So if a grant became available, I would come to the council and say, here's a grant opportunity. Will the council, will the RTM approve the money through whatever source before I start to apply for the grant? Because some of the grants are, you know, there's a lot of work involved, and I wouldn't want to go through that exercise and then come to the council and they say, no, we, we don't support it.
Okay. I just, I'm, I'm not sure, that's what, the process that we did on the one that we just did support. Did we do that with the, with the bike route one? I'm just saying, there's many ways to sort of get the funding.
Right, right.
It seemed to just pop up and we were able to, to deal with it, and we didn't even know that was coming. So, so you could go out and do the work and find, see if you can find a grant, and then we can deal with it from that point on.
Yes.
Counsel Parker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, would, if we pushed it back a year, would that affect anything? If we do it and move the one twenty-five to twenty-five for this year, for a hundred and twenty-five thousand to move it to twenty-five, and then twenty-five now to twenty-six, could we, how, how much of a change would that make?
There'd probably be, uh, there'd be a increase due to inflation. Um, it would require us to try to make repairs to the existing fence this year, uh, which is not something that we had scheduled to do, uh, but we, we could go back and make those.
And how bad is everything right now? Do you have estimates? I know that's, this current.
We do have an estimate for the fence, and that was fifteen thousand dollars.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, so I'm seeing none, so I'll call for a vote on zero dollars. Counsel Cassiri?
Yes.
Counsel Parker?
Abstain.
Counsel Franco?
Yes.
Counsel Jones?
Yes.
Melendez will be no. Uh, McBride?
No.
Borlon?
Yes.
Westerville?
No.
Jacome?
Yes.
Okay, so I have one, two, three, I have five in favor, three opposed, Melendez, McBride, Westerville, one abstaining, Parker. That carries zero dollars. All right.
Just, uh, we don't, the only other one potentially is the aquatics feasibility study. If you had any interest, just pointing that out.
Okay.
For, uh, page two twenty-four.
So if any sponsor wants to make a motion for that, then they can do that. All right. So we are on to six A, uh, Human Services Building, page two thirty-two. Thank you. Okay, so six A. I will make a motion for one hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Second, Franco.
Motion by Melendez, second by Franco.
The Human Services Building was originally built as a school way back, gosh, nineteen, early nineteen hundreds. It was the library until they moved to their existing location in nineteen seventy-seven, and around that time, they put in, um, some residential-grade windows, uh, for the, uh, it was called Social Services at that time. Um, so we're looking at replacing those windows with new energy-efficient hurricane debris-resistant windows. The, the existing windows leak air, they're energy inefficient. I mean, Marge has been after me for a few years now. To get this done, there's a total of eighteen windows, so we have thirty thousand allocated to design and administer the contract, and a hundred and fifty for construction, for a total of a hundred and eighty thousand.
Thank you. Any discussion? Counsel Jones?
Mr. Head, what's the normal lifespan of, what would the normal lifespan of these windows be?
Probably about thirty years or so. It's pretty typical for the commercial grade. I mean, I'm surprised that these have lasted as long as they have actually.
Are the, the windows that are in there now, the?
They're kind of more of a residential grade. It was kind of like a real cheap fix at the time.
And how, what does it do to help for energy? Like, what kind of savings do we get on the building when we do this?
You know, we get thermal efficiency from the sun coming in, so your cooling costs are a lot less, your heating costs are less because you're not leaking cold air in. The employee comfort is much higher because they're not getting chills from the air we can get.
I guess my question is the, sort of the payback, you know, from savings. How long does that take for a window, for windows like this?
Yeah, I don't really have a answer for that one. A number of years, you mean?
Yeah, I mean, if you had, if it saved ten percent on your energy and it sort of, you know, would take fifteen years for it to pay back its self or something like that, so.
Yeah, I, I don't, I wouldn't have an answer for that.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussions? All right. So I'm seeing none, so I'll call for a vote on a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. Counsel Cassiri?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Franco?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Melendez is yes. McBride?
Yes.
Borlon?
Yep.
Westerville?
Yes.
Jacome?
Yes.
I have nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. Thank you. All right. On to six C, Town Hall Complex, page two thirty-three.
Make a motion for a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Second, Jacome.
Motion by Parker, second by Jacome. Hundred fifty thousand.
All right. Um, the Groton Community Center, we hired an architect, um, to do a space utilization study. Originally, the project was considering, um, moving Parks and Rec Administration from the Spicer House into A Wing, moving Judge Probate over to A Wing, and doing some minor repairs to B and C Wing and created a new main entrance to B Wing. Um, at that time, you know, the architect was going through the process. I was hoping we'd get to the council before budget session, but that didn't happen. Um, I put in a hundred and fifty thousand to kind of, you know, carry the design, assuming it was going to be these renovations, which, you know, wouldn't amount to too much money. But, uh, recently, which actually was just last week, um, we received a draft copy of the study and, um, you know, because of all the work that we'd be doing, the energy codes kick in, so we're looking at new windows, new walls on the inside of the whole place, all insulated because the existing bricks are, that's it, it's just brick and concrete, so there's no R value in the walls. So to meet the energy code, you're putting in all new walls, ceilings, wiring. Um, we're also, you know, we're looking at a net zero or carbon-free HVAC option, which was, um, either geothermal or electric heat pumps, and the electric heat pumps was the chosen alternative with solar panels on the roof. Um, it's a newer technology that's pretty popular over in Europe, but we're looking at it here. Um, so all these things, the, the, the cost estimate came in, um, essentially, a new building would be about the same cost. I mean, we're talking thirty, thirty-five million dollars to renovate that building to what it should be. Um, you know, we're certainly going to still continue forward as far as getting this report done, you know, coming in with a referral, you know, to present it to you for discussion, but my recommendation at this time is to just zero this item out until we, you know, really figure out what the town. really figure out what the town has to do as far as Aquatic Center, Community Center, because we're talking big numbers here.
Thank you.
I'll move zero.
I've got a motion. I've got a motion by Counselor Casiri and a second by Counsel Jacome for zero dollars.
Oh, I had asked to speak, so, uh, no, I was going to make the motion and you called on Casiri.
She just yelled it.
I'm sorry.
She just said it.
It's okay. I called it out.
All right. Counsel Borlon?
When do we think we'll have a plan for this area?
Well, the architect's finishing up their study now, so we hope to bring it back to you in a month or two so we can have a discussion on, you know, how you want to proceed.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? All right. So I'm seeing none. I'll call for a vote on zero dollars. Counsel Casiri?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Franco?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Melendez is yes. McBride?
Yes.
Borlon?
Yes.
Westerville?
Yes.
And Jacome?
Yes.
I have nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining.
Um, just point of information for my notes here in my grid, this is our first cut officially, right?
No, we, just, uh, zero on 4H.
Okay, there was no manager's, uh, number on there.
4H was 125,000 and it's zero now.
So that's our first official, uh, cut from the manager's budget, is that correct?
4H was the first one, 6C was the second one.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you. All right. On to 6D, Groton Public Library.
I'll move the amount of $70,000 for CD.
Second.
All right. We have two projects proposed this year for the library. First is a roof replacement for the 1995 addition, which is in the back of the, of the building. Also includes a studio area. This roof is now getting on 28 years old, which is the end of its useful life, starting to show some problems with leaking. So we have $40,000 in here for the design and we'll be requesting construction funds next year. That's that portion of the project. And the second one is the, we've had issues with the plumbing in the original bathrooms backing up, and I, and I think Jen could attest to this, that this really needs to be resolved. My maintenance guys tell me they go in there and it is, because of the age of the pipes, they just all are, I don't want to say corroded, but they're all blocked up, so we, and they have no access points to get access to the plumbing, so they can't even snake these things out. So we have $30,000 in there to provide some access point, replace some drain lines, so that we don't have, you know, these, really the only public bathrooms in that facility, backing up quite a bit, actually. It happens more than it should.
Thank you. Any discussion? Counsel Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, when was, this is for the redesign of the roof from 1995 on the addition only. Is that right?
Yeah, the other, the original part of the library had its roof replaced, I don't recall, it was not too long ago.
Okay. That's my question is, when was the other?
Yeah.
They're, they're staggered, in other words.
They're staggered, yeah.
Okay. Okay. Okay, that's all. I just want to know when the, the other roof was.
Thank you. Thank you. Any further discussion? All right, seeing none. I'll call for a vote on $70,000. Counsel Casiri?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Franco?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Melendez is yes. McBride?
Yes.
Borlon?
Yep.
Westerville?
Yes.
Jacome?
Yes.
Nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. Carries. I don't know if I stated, that was a motion by Jacome and seconded by Franco. Okay. So now we're on to Technology. Thank you. On to 7A, Information Technology Infrastructure. That's page 236. And I'll make a motion for $130,000.
Second, Jones.
By Melendez, second by Jones. Okay. Is this you, Manager Burt?
Uh, no, Brian Hancock is on line.
Okay. Welcome.
Well, good evening, everybody. The CIP is for $130,000 as for data center upgrade improvements, continuing improvements on it. This would be for our network server, operating system upgrades, server hardware replacement, wireless hardware upgrades, the wireless heads that were installed four to five years ago are getting out of spec with the firmware upgrades and we can't move any farther, they do need to be replaced. And we are looking to upgrade the town's domain to a fully qualified domain. Currently, we are in a Nepp iOS domain system, which is pretty much a basic IO system, and we're looking to upgrade ours to a fully qualified name of the grotoncity.gov.
Any questions, discussion? I'm not seeing any. So I'll call for a vote on $130,000. Counsel Casiri?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Franco?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Melendez is yes. McBride?
Yes.
Borlon?
Yep.
Westerville?
Yes.
Jacome?
Yes.
I have nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. Okay, on to 7D, IT Security, page 237. Make a motion for $73,000.
Second, Westerville.
Motion by Melendez, seconded by Westerville.
Okay, uh, this CIP is for $73,000. This is for the scheduled replacement of the Town Hall Palo Alto firewall that is coming down to life soon, probably by the end of this year. We're also looking for some funding to upgrade and keep our disaster recovery plan current. It's a, it's a little out of date right now and we got to bring that up to par and some general security upgrades. We did have a, our security assessment today. It was, uh, we had people on site looking at this. They did recommend a few pieces of software that we should be installing to help our system. We did get really good passing grades on our security as, so far, and this is just enhancing it as we move forward.
Thank you. Counsel Jones?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Hancock, I know, I just wanted to know where, I think on Saturday, we did the, we passed the maintenance kind, the maintenance agreements for this firewall. How was, how does this relate to that?
Uh, there is a maintenance agreement on our current firewall. What we'll do is we'll partially fund that for the year, and then when we get the new one in, it'd be under warranty, probably for a year or two, depends how far we purchase it out. And the money would just stay in my current budget and just fold back into the general fund at the end of the year.
Okay. And when, what is your estimated time for this to take place?
Uh, we'll probably get a quote prior to July 1 and be ready to move soon after July 1.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion? So I'm seeing none, so I'll call for a vote on $73,000. Counsel Casiri?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Franco?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Melendez is yes. McBride?
Yes.
Borlon?
Yes.
Westerville?
Yes.
Jacome?
Yes.
I have nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. Thank you. Okay.
Hey, thank you.
Thank you.
Can I make a request? Chief Vasarow is a little bit delayed, he's in here just a couple of minutes. If we could do maybe 7G and then go back to 7F.
Okay.
He's close.
Okay. So 7G, that's 239.
I make a motion for $72,000.
Second.
Second.
Okay. Two, three, seven G. So I've got a motion from Counsel Parker and a second by Counsel Franco for 72,000.
So, um, this is, uh, meeting room equipment, replacement and upgrades. I believe we're in our third or fourth year of the upgrades. First year was replacing all the microphones in town, which were quite a few, the wireless because they're all out of code with the FCC. And then we moved on to the annex and obviously we're, we're done with the annex now. We just completed the town hall and now we're in the design stage and, and identifying a vendor for the library. So next year, we want to move on to the Senior Center and Spicer House, Parks and Rec. The Senior Center is quite a large building. They have a lot of equipment that's really just old and not really up to, to current standards. There are quite a few meetings, activities that happen there. The building is a bit challenging, especially the main room, because of the multi-uses. And we also have some very large town meetings there, so we want to try and make that a little bit easier, a little bit more efficient for people that are participating in it and also to have better displays for the public when they come to participate. So we also want to bring that room up to ADA code, especially particularly at the Senior Center, where we want to put in some assistive hearing devices. This room has assistive hearing devices. The room two does as well here. The library will also have assistive hearing devices for their meeting rooms, so we're also trying to bring us up into code as well. And Spicer House is going to be fairly simple setup for them. We want to make it easy for them to have some remote meetings, have some area where they can actually have meetings and share things a little bit easier and more efficiently, so, so that it's not too big of a bus within, within this proposed year.
Thank you. Any questions? So I'm seeing none. So I will call for a vote on $72,000. Counsel Casiri?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Franco?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Melendez is yes. McBride?
Yes.
Borlon?
Yes.
Westerville?
Yes.
Jacome?
Yes.
I have nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. On to 7F, Squad Car Body Cameras, Public Safety.
And make a motion for $44,000.
Second.
Okay. Uh, $44,000. Let me just go back here. Motion by Parker, second by Franco.
Thank you, sir, Franco.
Yeah, Franco.
Evening, everyone. I believe you're on the Squad Car Cameras. That is something, that's a project that's already underway. We have installed cameras into all of our marked vehicles, all as, as are required under the Police Accountability Act. So all of that has been done and we have a continuing financial arrangement with Axon, which is the same company that provides us with our body worn cameras. So that's a payment plan we've already undertaken, so that's, uh, that's already been implemented. Just paying the, the yearly charges for it.
Okay. All right. Any questions, discussion? Okay, I'm seeing none. So I'll call for a vote on $44,000. Counsel Casiri?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Franco?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Melendez is yes. McBride?
Yes.
Borlon?
Yes.
Westerville?
Yes.
Jacome?
Yes.
I have nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. All right. 7F. So we are now on to 7J, Fire EMS Radio Control Station Installation. And that's page 240. I'll make a motion for $110,000.
Second.
Jones?
Motion by Melendez, second by Jones.
Uh, good evening, everyone. Joining me tonight online, you can see Captain James B. We also have representatives from the Groton Fire Officers Association, Deputy Fire Chief in Groton City, Ted Sargent, along with Chief from Groton Long Point Fire Department, Arnie Lowtringer. Over the last year or two, they've been undertaking a project with their own radio systems. Kind of put, put something out front that I know has come up with other topics tonight. Yes, they did pursue grants and they're going to talk about this. They pursued grants to install fire service radios under the state's radio system, the same radio system we've been using with the police department. But as I understand it, it was not eligible for upgrades to the infrastructure in the building. So this is specifically to support their new radios that they're going to be purchasing in the next year or two. So with that, I'll, I'll turn it over to my colleagues from the fire service that may be able to shed a little bit more light on this, but, you know, I wanted to intro it and make sure that you understood that this is a, a project that we're working with them on. And both Chief Lowtringer or Deputy Chief Sergeant want to comment on this?
Sure. This is Ted Sargent, Deputy Chief of the City Groton Fire Department, and I'm President of Fire Officers. Can everyone hear me all right?
We can.
Okay. So like Chief Vasarow said, we received a grant. It was a multi-department grant, so seven fire departments and two EMS agencies. We were successful in receiving the grant for just over $800,000 to purchase radio equipment. It was under the FEMA Assistance Firefighters Grant Act. The grant is only open to fire departments and EMS agencies. So it specifically does not allow purchase of fixed repeaters such as a dispatch center would have on site, dispatch consoles, that type of equipment is not permitted as part of this grant. However, we, since we do, are moving forward with the system that the, like the town police are on and the city police, we do need some, some upgrades at the dispatch center for our system to operate properly. And this will enable us, in an emergency situation, to directly communicate with the local police agencies. Right now, we have no way to communicate directly with the police agencies, but this will enable that along with enhanced communications for all the fire EMS agencies in the Groton area.
Thank you. Good. All right. Are there any questions?
I just add, we've been on this system, I'm proud of the fact that we started on this system before any other municipal agency in the state of Connecticut did. When we undertook a, an examination of our own radio system, it needed to be replaced at an expense that was far, far greater than what we ended up paying with this system. Since then, municipalities across the state of Connecticut have gotten on the state radio system. As, as Deputy Chief Sergeant said, the city of Groton, Stonington, Norwich, I believe Ledgerd is getting on to it, and several other police departments. Fire service has started getting on this across the state. It's a, it's a robust system, but there is some structural changes that we need to do internally. We have a different radio system that we support for the fire service currently on a different wavelength, different band. So this would be to upgrade all of that equipment for them so that they can integrate into our for them so that they can integrate into our, uh, dispatch center. So it's really, you know, this is, this is taking the backbone that we have at the police department and expanding it to allow the fire service on it, and it's, they're, right now, there are two different radio systems and this would fully integrate them in our operations center so that they could, uh, utilize this and talk to our dispatchers and get dispatched from, uh, from this radio system and integrate it completely.
All right, thank you. Counselor Jones?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, Chief. Um, during the Mystic fire that we had, I guess it was the fall, were you able to communicate with all the parties during that fire? This is the one on the other side of the river in the Stonington side?
Yeah, I, I, we, they weren't on the radio system then, so, um, I'll defer to my colleagues in the fire service that may have been at that, I wasn't at that scene, so I can't speak to that specifically, but they're not on this radio system, but, you know, we, the capabilities that we currently have, they were dispatched, uh, using the, the legacy system we have now.
But going forward, we would, we would be able to, with this system, we would be able to communicate?
Yes.
With them?
Yes.
And is that, do we have other surrounding communities that we're not able to communicate with and this will fix that?
Uh, again, I'll, I'll defer to them, but as I, as far as I know, there's not a lot of fire service that are on it yet, just like when we got on it as a police department, there weren't a lot, but there, if, if you build it, they will come, you know, that whole, uh, Field of Dreams type of thing. Yes, there, there are that are, uh, municipalities that are looking at this for their fire service and ambulance service. We also support, uh, Groton ambulance as well as, uh, Mystic River ambulance, so I don't, I don't know if, uh, if, Ted, if you want to comment on that or if Admiral Loachring would like to?
Well, yeah, this is, uh, this Chief Loachring, for a minute, I want to emphasize that, uh, this new system, the Connecticut Land Mobile Radio Network, is, uh, as Chief Vasar says, really kind of exploding across the state, and the emphasis is from the federal government. They want more and more agencies across the country following nine eleven, this is how far back this goes, into this digital radio, uh, standard. It gives us much better coverage, uh, much better security on the fire ground when our firefighters are inside buildings, and, uh, it's encrypted, so it gives us security against people unfortunately today that want to hack into our, uh, systems and, uh, listen to communication. So, um, we're a little late in my mind in getting on this, uh, as we're having difficulties with the current system and its coverage, so this is, uh, only something that, uh, is, has got to happen eventually, and maybe I want to emphasize for the boards, each of the departments that, um, Chief Sergeant mentioned, uh, we have skin in the game. We have a ten percent cost share that we're all paying for our different localities, uh, we have different, uh, pagers that we still have to buy that isn't covered by the grant, so, uh, the Groton Fire Officers have worked hard, as Chief Vasar said, to do the research, get the grant, uh, come into this as a group, which is great news, we'll all be transitioning at the same time, uh, to a system that's, uh, really necessary for, for our firefighters.
Uh, thank you, Chief. Um, yeah, no, I just find it kind of amazing since the lessons that were learned at nine eleven where nobody could talk to anybody, that it's taken us this long, but I congratulate you on moving forward and spearheading this initiative to get help and the other captains to help everybody get to be talking to each other, so, um, thank you.
Well, this is truly the hard work of the fire service, when they, I think, uh, when, when other agencies went on this, they saw some value in it, started looking at it, and then, uh, they've had a really, a really robust and collaborative group that's looked at this for a couple of years now, and I think they've come to some really good conclusions. And the other thing I might add that may be of interest to the council, although we won't see any immediate, um, return on this, there, the, the infrastructure that we have now that we maintain, uh, exclusively through the dispatch center, eventually some of that will go away, or most of that will go away. There's, just like with the police department, there's remote sites that we have to maintain, there's also some, uh, some service contracts that we have to make sure that communications continues with those ro, remote sites. Eventually, when this, uh, when, when maybe some of our partner agencies out of Groton get on this system and we can sunset this system, it will save money in maintenance costs and, uh, just like with the, the, the police system, we'll kind of just let it die a slow and, and uneventful death.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Counselor Bordelon?
Uh, thank you, uh, thank you to, uh, you know, the, the fire department for their initiative and, uh, you know, working hard to try to bring something forward for improvement for safety and quality of all the residents of the city and the town of Groton and surrounding subdivisions, uh, so that's, that's extremely, extremely important. Um, you know, when looking at this, um, is, so is currently Stonington, New London not on the system, is that correct?
So Stonington is not, Stonington police are on the system, the fire departments are not. Uh, the New London, uh, city of London is not on the system, however, they are in the process of initial stages of applying to be on the system. So I anticipate New London and Waterford will be on the system within the next two years.
How about Ledgerd or Norwich?
Oh, again, Ledgerd police are not on the sys, or sorry, Ledgerd police are in the process of going on the system. Ledgerd Fire, I honestly don't know their status. Norwich is in the process of final stages of switching to the system. Uh, that is one big advantage of this system is, if we went mutually to anywhere in the state, actually, there's a twenty-four hour number that the state maintains, a center they maintain, you just call them, tell them what city you're going to, and they can patch you through to their system.
Yeah. Um, no, thank you for that. Um, you know, um, lastly, how about the, the, you know, federal, how about the naval base? Because I know when the, the structure burned, you know, down for me, uh, several years ago to the ground, uh, the Navy fire was out there, uh, helping fight it, and so I'm just curious how, what, if they're moving to this or not yet?
So, uh, the federal government's a little more complicated, so, as strange as it sounds, federal agencies are not permitted to apply for this grant through the federal system. So the subbase is currently utilizing a very similar radio system, and their radios are capable of operating on the state system. Uh, I've been in discussions with the state, it's, it's really more a matter of paperwork, you have to sign a, a memorandum of agreement between the subbase and the state, but the subbase is going to be moving on to the system. Probably not at the same time as us, but... Yeah, this is Chief Loachring again, for the Councilman Bordelon, that's a great question, but I want to reassure everyone, in our work on this, uh, we've worked very closely with our mutual aid partners across the area, all the way up to Griswold, and, uh, so they, one, understand that we're making this transition, two, we're working out, um, temporary arrangements, um, uh, some equipment, we can give them a, a handheld radio if we interact with them and they're not on the system yet, so Pfizer, EV, the subbase, we're in ver, as Chief Sergeant says, we're in very close contact with them, so there'll be no loss of coverage or continuity once we go on to the system. Yeah.
Perfect, yeah, that, that was my, that's, that's the question I was asking, so that's great, just making sure there's, uh, because they do play a vital role in response time to our area. Um, and, and I think Mystic, the fire on the Stonington side of Mystic was a great example of a joint effort of municipalities coming together on a night that, you know, we did not expect, uh, and thank God for the rain, but, uh, on those calls, on the radios, you could hear, uh, you know, you know Norwich, uh, coming, I mean, so you, you, there was a multiple, multitude of, of departments, so that connectivity in any ways that you guys can help the older systems stay connected, I think that's the most important as we move to these better systems, so, um, I thank you guys for all your efforts and, uh, all that you guys do, and, um, I'm excited to see this to come to fruition, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay. So I'm seeing none, so I'll call for a vote on one hundred and ten thousand dollars. Counselor Casiri?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Franco?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Melendez is yes. McBride?
Yes.
Bordelon?
Yes.
Westerveld?
Yes.
And Jakome?
Yes.
All right, I have nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. Thank you, all right. On to seven K, police evidence processing command vehicle, page two forty-one.
I'll move two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Who'd by Casiri, seconded by Melendez?
I just had a quick point of information, really quick.
Sure.
Uh, for the, for the town manager, uh, anything we can do to like, get out that, you know, we're moving to these new systems, I think is, you know, great PR for our town to show that we're putting money into that, uh, change of infrastructure for our safety, so it would just be nice to kind of, you know, get that out there, that, that so far we're in the, we're in the steps, uh, and hopefully, uh, the outcome will support it.
Thank you, we'll, we'll take that up at a different time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief?
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, so this, w- we've, we've attempted to pursue, uh, through various means, the ability to purchase a vehicle, a multi-use vehicle for the department. Since about twenty sixteen, we had a, we had a vehicle that had been in our inventory and, and utilized heavily for a couple of decades. Um, it was a nineteen seventy-something, uh, panel van that was utilized for a variety of different things, we used it for our marine unit, our dive team, we used it for evidence for, for moving things to and from, uh, crime scenes, things of that nature. Uh, that, that outlived its useful existence and, quite frankly, was, uh, in a state of disrepair where it wasn't, it was cost-effective to maintain it anymore, and it was something that I, I had some serious concerns about as far as safety went. So we divested of that particular vehicle. I've explored grants, looked at a bunch of different ways to get something that we could utilize for, for multipurposes, like, we have crime scenes, we have no way to process those scenes out in the field. When we have serious injury or fatal accidents or serve search warrants or go out to large-scale events, we don't have a platform to operate out of. Uh, nothing like that exists in this part of the state, nothing that is available to us and our partner agencies here in the town. Fire service has a lot of great pieces of equipment, but they don't have, uh, really what we need, where we have something that can function as both a command post but also something that will provide shelter to our officers and, um, assisting personnel out at the scene of a critical incident or a crime scene or, uh, you know, an event that's ongoing. We've been looking for, we've done our due diligence, there, there were grants years ago, as, as we heard in this last presentation, post-nine eleven, there were things that were available to municipal agencies, state agencies, federal agencies, and the money flowed. Uh, it doesn't flow that much anymore when it comes to things of this nature, there aren't grants out there that will say, okay, we'll purchase you this vehicle for you to use under a homeland security umbrella. Um, you know, and particularly in this town where we have a lot of things that happened because of federal agencies that are here in town, the Navy, the, uh, the various entities throughout the town. We have events where these things, uh, could be utilized, but, but really it's something that we need where we can have, we can put our equipment on it, we can keep it there, we can store it there, rather than shuttling it out in the middle of the night, uh, shuttling vehicles back and forth, uh, but also allow our officers and our supervisors to sit there, particularly at a, at a major crime scene or accident or critical incident where they can, they'll have commuter, computer connectivity inside the vehicle, they'll have shelter, they'll have a generator, the ability to, for, to have a workstation in there to do it, uh, remotely, send out media advisories, get on, get on, uh, social media, the things that we would expect at, at a, at a scene. Right now, we don't do that. When something critical does happen, we're operating out of our building and then moving out remotely. Uh, I, I will also tell, um, the council, if, if it's a matter of concern as far as the type of vehicle, we are not pursuing some type of armored vehicle, I was asked that question by a, a person a couple of weeks ago, months ago, about, you know, the type of vehicle, that's not what we're looking for, we're looking for, and I did send some, some photographs to the town manager of, uh, the old type of vehicle that we had as opposed to what we're looking for, it's something more of what you would see, a UPS-type van, a little bit smaller than that, not, not motorhome size, something functional to have a couple of people inside there, store equipment, um, house individuals during the scene of a, an ongoing incident, like we had, um, uh, last inauguration, gubernatorial inauguration over a Navy housing where we had an individual in a, in a house for, for hours on end and utilized a whole bunch of different entities and didn't have a place to work out of and didn't have, um, a, a platform for which us to have all the, the tools at our disposal. So that's kind of in a nutshell what we're looking for. Again, I have, uh, and Captain B, I, I believe he's still on here, he has been the, the, the point man on this, trying to find grants, um, we have not been able to locate any of them and we've not been able to identify funds. Uh, we did pitch this as an ARPA-funded project, but, uh, I know there were other, uh, more pressing matters that the council felt were, were important at the time.
Thank you. Uh, any discussion questions? Counselor Casiri?
Thank you. Um, would this vehicle possibly be able to have a bathroom in it?
Uh, possibly, uh, it depends on how big, you know, the platform is, you know, I, I don't want something excessively big, because if we're going to utilize it in Mystic, it has to get through downtown streets.
Understood.
Uh, but, but some of them do come with them.
Yeah, I, the one that I'm familiar with has a restroom in it, and the reason I bring it up is because if we're trying to entice, you know, diversity in the department as a, uh, female officer, sometimes it's nice to have that option as men don't have to worry about that, and, sorry to be crass, but it's true, I've been in incidents where I've had to stand out for hours and had to ask, uh, residents...
I hadn't considered that, but thanks.
I have had to ask residents to use their bathroom because the men were able to, you know?
Sure, sure.
Go where they needed to go, if you will, so. Um, so, you know, as a woman, it was nice. So this vehicle would be able to be utilized in critical incidents like, you know, I hate to bring it up, but an active shooter situation?
Yes.
You would be able to u, utilize it as a command post, uh, homicides, uh, mental health crises, standoff situations, great.
Fatal fires or fire investigations.
Absolutely. Um, and possibly it could have been used for the pandemic mask distribution of masks.
Indeed, could have.
Great. Um, also, would it be able to be used to, um, sustain officers for cold weather incidents where you're outside for many hours having to stand outside?
Yeah, and the, the one that comes to that particular incident, two years ago, I think it was two years ago, the years run together now, but it was on New Year's Day, we did have a fatal accident on Route one eighty-four, and our, it was obviously on New Year's Day, so officers were out there for hours on end in cold weather for that exact situation.
Great. Um, and with climate change being a, obviously pressing issue, um, there has been more extreme weather incidents occurring, could this potentially be a command post for an extreme weather incident? Great. Um, and the command van that I'm familiar with is twenty-two years old, so are these vehicles able to be sustained for long periods of time?
They are, they are. When I was, uh, uh, with my prior employer, with the state police, we had our major crime van from nineteen ninety-seven, and I think they just got rid of it a year and a half ago.
Great, so if we were to invest the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it would last for a significant amount of time?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
Counselor Bordelon?
Uh, thank you. Um, yeah, this is a very unique, uh, piece of equipment that it sounds like it could be utilized in many capacities. I'm just curious as to, looking at the, um, looking at the opioid, uh, funds under that, uh, money, it, you know, when, when you talk about mental health, that was a component that was stated that it could be, money, money could be used for, I mean, I could picture this being up on a major drug bust or other things, um, possibly handing out Narcan, things like that. Um, John, uh, to the town manager, I mean, have we looked under those guidelines to see that we could use those funding, uh, from opioid funds for, towards to offset the costs of something like this?
I think it'd be a bit of a stretch, but we could look at, you know, um, you know, we're probably a couple of years away from having more funding available anyways, but I think it'd be kind of a stretch on this one.
Yeah, I, I just, I mean, it said, I mean, mental health was a, a component of that. Um, also, from the mental health standpoint, looking at ways that the, uh, a therapist would be on board in there, you know, as a, as an area. Uh, let's, let's say there was a rape crisis or something, and, uh, you know, a female, you know, needed to be, or a, or a juvenile, someone being sexually trafficked or something, it's a safe harbor, um, without, you know, putting in a back cruiser for a little while. So, just from a lot of a, angles, there, there, you know, there is the opioid funds, and so, um, I'm just doing some reading as we're, we're looking at this as different things, so yeah, it, there is, there is a possibility, and I just, uh, I just would love if you could get back to see if something like this could have been or could be funded under that, thank you.
I was just going to mention, I, I had one experience with one of these vehicles myself. I was the public information officer my last, as part of being county administrator, we actually had someone with a gun, we were tracking it, I was in one of these vans, doing GIS, talking with the newspapers and television stations as roads continuously changed, that we were closing, and it was, you know, you really need a spot for that kind of thing, it was, you know, dire to have that, for that kind of incident.
All right, thank you, Counselor Jakome.
So your, uh, town manager, Bert, you're saying you'd be in favor of pursuing this, this vehicle? Well, Chief, you can, you made it sound, um, whether or not this is a need or a want, Well, Chief, you made it sound, whether or not this is a need or a want, and I think you explained it, and Counselor Casiri explained it properly, for active shooters and just intense situations, crime scenes, things like that. Like I did see there's a meeting room, I don't even know how big this thing is, it'd be interesting to see. If you did have photos, you could send them, or if the town manager can send them. Are we, appreciate that.
I can put up on the screen what he just sent me a little bit ago if you want.
If you could.
Sure.
That first photo, for those of you who may have, may be old enough to remember the Siri SWAT from the 1970s, that's what that vehicle is. We, that isn't our exact one, it is the exact model and it is the approximate year, but that's what we divested of a number of years ago after three plus decades of use. And that's kind of what we're looking at. Something that, you know, a platform where we could put, you know, that has cabinetry inside, workstations, generator. There are some that are very large, and I think I know which one you're talking about, which is pretty big. I've spent many hours in that vehicle myself. Something that's a little bit more appropriate, I think, for our needs would be, would be smaller than something. That's kind of what we're looking at. And, you know, and I will tell you, I've had the opportunity to look at these and invest in them before for my prior employer, but the prices have gone up exponentially, you know, even in the last 10 years. And that, yeah, there's another version. You'll see it has an awning, and in the back of that, it's a television. So if you have people outside that you're briefing them, you can put your computer monitor up there. So if members of the council or the mayor showed up, the town manager, there was something they had questions, I could bring things up and show it to them there on the scene.
So essentially, like you said, it's just like the command, portable command post where you're not running over here. What have you been doing now? You said you, but you're running back up here.
The supervisors will take their vehicles, they'll put it together, they'll put the backs up and hopefully if it's not raining, keep things from blowing around and, you know, pull out some whiteboards and chalkboards or whatever they need in the back for, you know, things like a large scale surge, you know, for looking for a missing person or a crime scene like that. So it'll be, be working out of the back of a vehicle. And as far as transporting stuff, it's a shuttle back and forth. You know, people will get sent back to the police department or detectives will be assigned to go there, pick up a different vehicle, assemble some equipment from inside the facility and bring it out to the scene. Traffic accidents, it's the same way. There's a whole bunch of equipment that we now utilize for traffic accident investigations. We don't do this alone, by the way. We partner with Groton City, Stonington, Ledger to process traffic accident scenes that are fatal through serious injuries. We work collaboratively with them, but there's a whole host of technology and equipment, Total Station, which is a surveying equipment that can be utilized out there to mark every piece of evidence. It has to be transported individually. So it's stored at the police department and then transported out to the scene rather than having it all right there. And if, you know, the battery dies or something happens, you have to go back and get it, you know. Having a generator would be a critical piece of equipment on this as well.
Yeah, definitely seems like a very useful piece of equipment for sure. You know, I was, to be honest, I was thinking about even putting a motion to do this out, but I think you might have convinced me. It seems like a very useful piece of equipment in emergency situations, so consider it a little longer. Thank you.
And one thing I didn't add is usually these will be equipped with exterior lighting. So if you're out at the scene, any kind of scene at night, you know, the fire service is great to us, they'll stay out there with their trucks. We have many volunteer fire departments here that are willing to help. We have paid fire departments, but, you know, this might allow them to leave at a certain point in time when they want to go home and we can actually illuminate that on our own and process the scene, which could take hours.
Thank you. Counselor Casiri?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Chief, can you, can you just explain what like a mobile communication center would be like a mobile command post that it wouldn't necessarily be for like a one-on-one interview that would be done at the police department or at the appropriate, this is more of a mobile communication center?
Right, you'd have, you'd have radio equipment in there, you'd probably have a workstation that has computers, other radios, being able to talk to various different entities. You'd have, in vehicles like this, now they have Wi-Fi or you'll have some type of broadband access so you can access the internet and get, you know, pull information in that you need or send it out when you need to if you're working with other agencies or, you know, the incidents that we've all known that have happened here in town and elsewhere, media has a strong interest in that, being able to put together a news release at the scene, having a place, a focal point where you can bring them in, you can say, hey, you know, I want to give you a press briefing as to what's going on here, provide updates to elected officials, to the community at large and to the media to say, hey, here's, you know, here's what we have, here's the situation, you know. Clearly, you know, a vehicle like this would be kind of the moth to a flame, right? People would want to go to that. They would want to go there to get information and that's where we'd set up, and not just distribute information to them, but also use it as a rally point for our folks. If we had a critical incident, we need to bring them back in, assemble at that area, and then we can also send them out from there if they have additional details.
And I think it's important to highlight the fact that if there were to be a critical incident in Groton, the other regular emergency calls do not stop. And so therefore, having a second command post to run the critical incident out of would be essential to make sure that your men and women are safe and that-
Yeah, the incident commander would be at this, you know, if there, if regular operations would be continuing, if there was something that happened in one part of the town, you know, the incident commander for that, whether it's myself or one of the captains or a lieutenant that was handling it, you know, maybe at that, well, regular operations, calls for service being handled by the dispatchers at the scene. And we might even have a dispatcher come out if it was that big of an incident where they would operate out of that vehicle to kind of separate the critical incident from everything else that's going on.
Right, because the heart attacks and the regular calls don't stop during critical incidents.
They still have prisoners at the police station, may have people coming in looking for assistance for other things as well.
Right. Also, I just wanted to highlight that Counselor Jacob, you brought up, you know, officers having to go back and forth from the police department. Critical incidents, you really need all hands on deck and it's really detrimental to have to have officers leave the scene, especially when you need numbers to get a perimeter.
Sure.
In an incident like that. So to be able to not have to have people leave the scene constantly to get equipment, it's really vital to that critical incident. Is that fair to say?
It is very fair to say.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Chief. How many of our surrounding towns have vehicles like this?
New London had one. I think it's more of a DUI checkpoint. It was, it was bought under a DUI grant many, many years ago. It was for DUI enforcement, so it's not really like this. Norwich has something similar, much bigger, and that's a cyber that was bought under a cyber, under the auspices of a cyber grant. And like I said, I've spent time in that one, but that's a much bigger platform than I think we'd be looking for. Other than that, I don't know of any. I don't believe Stonington does. I don't believe Ledger, Groton City, any of the other surrounding towns around here does.
Is this something also you would be sharing with the city?
If they had a need for it, absolutely.
And I guess surrounding towns is just a mutual aid kind of a thing that would go on?
Yeah, if we were, if we were involved in it or if they had requested mutual aid, needed assistance, we'd certainly help them out.
And if you didn't, if this didn't pass, you would just proceed on with the way you're doing it now with the number of cars doing all that kind of stuff. Do you have a sense of how much it impedes you not having something like this?
It's like anything, when you don't have it, you try and make things work, but you look for something better, and that's what we're looking for. We're looking for something better. And, you know, we do utilize, you know, and I'm just thinking of all the different things that we could utilize it in addition, you know. We don't have it now and it does encumber our efforts from time to time. But just like any, you know, any, you got to get the mission done regardless of whether you have, if we didn't have, you know, we have cruisers that go out of service all the time and we continue to have to get the mission done, but we still need the cruisers. You know, we have, we have people that get sick, get injured, we still have a mission to complete. So even though they're out of service for a little while, we still do the job, we'll still do it no matter what. But yes, it's, it's something that we've done without, but I do think it's something that will enable us to do our job a little bit better and help, certainly help the department and ultimately help the community.
Is this price an average price? Are they, is there Cadillac versions of this and sort of, you know?
Yeah, the prices do vary and I remember probably 10 years ago, a vehicle about what we're looking for was about $160,000. Well, during the pandemic, everything's gone up. So we're taking a guess at it. We've gotten some ballpark estimates, so the figure I put in here, I think, is a conservative one. You know, could it be more? Could it be less? Yes.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Parker?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So this tentatively could be 250,000 or more, depending on the computer equipment you put in, the software that you have to put in, which would probably have to be upgraded each year. So we're looking at additional cost per year for, to make sure, if it's under a maintenance agreement and then it changes. Because we just did some updates with IT department and BC just compliant and everything else at the same time. So, so the potential cost down the road, what would estimate, and then a generator, you have to build it, so it's going to be custom built, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
If I may, we would, you know, if the council saw fit to fund at some level, we would work within whatever budgetary constraints. And certainly the, as far as upgrades, computer upgrades, that would be confined to whatever mobile data terminals we're using or any computer services that we have within the department right now. The stuff that goes in there is usually hardware, but I would, I'd certainly work with our IT department to make sure it was fully functional.
All right, thank you.
Counselor McBride?
Thank you. My questions were similar to Counselor Parker's in that what additional cost would there be? I know there's, there's maintenance and there's gas and there's upkeep. You know, when you buy a fire truck or a police car, there's all these extras. Is this everything or do you think there's an extra 50 or 75 to outfit or is this included in this?
That's include, the outfitting is what we've budgeted for in here.
So this drive-
That's what we've planned for. That's what, you know, it's, when it arrives, it's ready to go into service.
Okay, thank you. What's the average age one of these vehicles would last, do you think?
Like I said, we had one that I used when I was in the state police that we purchased in 1997 that was utilized for every major crime I ever went to.
So 20 years?
Yeah, it was, it was utilized up until a couple of years ago. Again, you know, it's, and I would anticipate it would, would last a good 20 years. We have, we're fortunate to have great maintenance. Our folks that work for Greg back there, I'll give, I'll give his folks a shout out. They do an awesome job with our vehicles. They, they make them last longer than probably they should last in some cases because they're good at what they do, so I don't have any concerns with that. This would be a vehicle that would certainly outlive my career with the department.
Okay, because it doesn't get day-to-day usage like a patrol car, it's used for special vehicles.
Right, right. And we would store it, we have the ability to store it back where it would be undercover.
Okay. And any other additional costs? I mean, training is something that's already embedded in the officer, so it's not additional training for this vehicle, correct?
They just need to be licensed on it. We wouldn't let anybody drive it. It would only be the people that were properly licensed and trained to utilize this vehicle. So it would be assigned to a group of officers who would take responsibility for it and have to make sure that regular inspections are done on it and that all the equipment that's supposed to be on it's checked and maintained. But I don't anticipate any, any expense going along with that. That's more of an in-house. When we take receipt of it, you know, you're trained on it by the, by the vendor who's providing this to you is to make sure that you go through all these checklists and things that you need to go through regularly and, you know, it will be a warranted vehicle, much like any other vehicle that we get.
Okay, so your department could absorb any cost that's in your operating budget now? It's not going to be additional cost?
Yes, no.
Good, thank you.
Any further discussion? Counselor Westerveld?
Thank you very much. Chief, is there anything like this on the state contract?
I don't know if this is on contract or not. There might be, because I know the state police have bought other types of vehicles, so conceivably there would be some on state contract, yes.
Okay, I'd just recommend that be someplace-
Sure, absolutely. We do that with, with everything we purchase, we always look through state contract, you know, the purchasing agent goes through that to make sure that we're getting the best price. The only time we don't go through state contract is when we can find a better price elsewhere.
Understood. Thank you very much.
Any further discussion? All right, so I'm seeing none. So I'll call for a vote on $250,000. Counselor Casiri?
Yes.
Parker?
No.
Franco?
Abstain.
Jones?
Yes.
Melendez is a yes. McBride?
Abstain.
Bordelon?
I'm a no.
Westerveld?
Yes.
Jacob?
Abstain.
Okay, so I have, if failing, four in favor, Melendez, Casiri, Jones, Westerveld. Two opposed, Bordelon, Parker, and three abstaining, Franco, Jacob, McBride. Okay.
Thanks for your consideration.
Just a question. Is this partial funding, would that in any way be helpful or is it just an all or nothing type of thing?
No, I think it would be, it would be helpful. We'd have to try and cobble together funds elsewhere, but yeah, it would certainly, it would scale this differently.
Point of information?
Sure.
Again, I just, I just finished looking on the state website again. Any form of training that this hub is used for, which there could be education where you're bringing this out to an area, maybe a community that's, you know, a community policing umbrella where you're bringing the officers into-
Counselor Bordelon, what's your question?
Yeah, I'm getting there, thank you. Give you time to get to the point, thank you.
Well, my point is we're not debating this right now, I'm just-
That's fine, then, that's fine. I'm all set, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I guess I'll make a motion for $125,000.
Second.
Motion by Melendez, seconded by Casiri.
Point of information?
Sure.
Can you do anything with $125,000?
I'm sure we could. Would it have the same, it may take, it may take time to put some of those pieces of equipment, but I'm sure we could get the structure of the vehicle itself.
You could get the structure.
It may be upgraded over time.
Okay.
Counselor Bordelon?
I just think we're locking up funds now. I mean, we didn't fund it. It doesn't mean that we don't want it at a later date. I do think that there are some grants and funding out there that we probably can get. As I was trying to say in my last point of information, I encourage that we seek to understand all funding sources of funding revenue coming in. And there is a chance under the opioid funds that this vehicle, under education purposes, bringing it into a community that's hard hit with maybe identified as high volume of drug use or abuse or needing of education, gun, you know, proper safety, which stated at one of the meetings under the budget where, you know, folks in the military community don't understand the laws here. Well, this is a nice way to bring a van in, offer some hot chocolate, talk to people, get out in the community, put the tarp up. It doesn't have to be always a, you know, a takeover situation or something critical. It could be used in a hub station for education and that would, would fall under these funds and other grants. So I just encourage that we seek other funds and we don't try to partially fund something and piecemeal it together, staggered on the taxpayer's dollars. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McBride.
Thank you. I'm in support of that motion. I think it makes, makes sense because I think this council can speak for everybody, but we're all looking at the mill rate, making sure we're being as, I don't want to say conservative, but we're watching taxpayer dollars as best as possible. So the 250 nut is a big nut, but I, I think it's, I think we can earmark 125, put that aside, earmark it for next year, then maybe come back for 125 and accomplish the objective that you need, I think. I'm in support of it. I'm just, I'm just trying to watch all the dollars. So I, I'm in support of that motion. Thank you.
Counselor Jones?
Thank you. Chief, where is the, the big cost of this vehicle?
It's the vehicle, well, the vehicle is a cost, but then the upgrades, usually if you go out to one of these manufacturers, they will do a lot of the, you know, the interior configurations, the air conditioning, you know, because it's a different type of platform. They put an air conditioner, not just your typical vent air conditioners in it, which does heating and air conditioning, by the way. But, but, you know, I guess the question is, could you, you know, $250,000, we would be able to buy, purchase exactly what we want, the way we want it. Less than that, could we make something work? If the council and the RTM saw fit to provide us with those funds, we would have to make it work. And it's better than what we have now. So we would have to get a platform, like I said, maybe not as robust as what we intended, but something that will serve the purpose and certainly is better than what we have right now.
Right. I mean, it seems like what you described, working out of the back of your, of the cruisers, you could easily put that stuff onto a counter that's inside of a van like this and basically do the same thing. It doesn't, maybe isn't wired completely or have every, you know, bell and whistle, but...
Maybe it doesn't have an internal generator. Maybe we have to get a portable generator to hook it up to it.
So you could put, you could, I think for $125,000, you could put together a fairly decent vehicle that would serve the purposes for all the situations that you've described.
Have you met Captain B? If you knew Captain B's reputation, he could, yeah, he could make something work.
Yeah, I know. He can do pretty much.
I'm sure. Nobody here probably knows what I'm referring to, but everybody in the police department does.
Yeah.
It may be public works.
Yeah, so I just think, that's what I'm saying. The way you've described and how you use your current vehicles to do it, you're really just giving them a cover and moving it inside and giving them a counter to put these on. You would be able to do 90% of what you need to do with that, or 80 or something.
Okay. Counsel Franco?
Thank you. I always support the police budget. I am always an advocate and would like to always do as much as we possibly can. But within this budget, my thought process was, I came into it where I knew the majority of my cuts could be in CIPs. And as I've listened here today and I've heard you say, even if we don't have it, we're going to continue to give the same level of service. This might make things a little bit easier, but you're going to give the same level of service. So with the items that I had listed on my, basically my little sheet here, this was sadly one of the things that I was going to cut today. So I will abstain from voting because I don't want to vote against it. I just can't at this time vote in favor of it. And even as you said, there's numerous communities around us that don't even have such a vehicle. And it's, I get the purpose of it. I understand it and I want to support it, but this is where, like when it came down to crunch, this is where I wanted, and I was even going to give you money for training. I mean, but this is where I was coming down with some crunch.
No, I understand.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no further discussion, I'll call for a vote on $125,000. Counsel Cassiri?
Yes.
Counsel Parker?
Abstain.
Counsel Franco?
Abstain.
Counsel Jones?
Yes.
Melendez is a yes. McBride?
Yes.
Bordelon?
A no.
Westerveld?
Yes.
Jacome?
Abstain.
Okay, so I have five in favor. Five in favor, Melendez, Cassiri, Jones, McBride, Westerveld. One opposed, Bordelon. Three abstaining, Franco, Jacome, Parker. Okay, carries. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you once again.
On to, on to planning, 70L Planning Public Works Electronic Document Management System, page 242. I'll make a motion for $125,000.
Second.
Motion by Melendez and seconded by Bordelon. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development Services. I know it's late, so I'll try to get through these as quickly as I can. So this first item is a technology request. So both Planning and Development Services and Public Works share a lot of vault space as well as a lot of just floor area within the annex that is plans, files, aerials, other documents that we must retain and store on site. And both of us are running out of storage room. Digitizing these plans and documents will save a lot of space, but more importantly, will bring us into the current age of where, when people are looking for documents for plans, site plans, different properties, it'll all be accessible via the internet through the town's portal. And especially as we're moving to link things up to our online building permit and planning permitting software, this would really go hand in hand with that. We are proposing to do this project so really it would be scanning all of our files, large format maps and everything else that we have from a planning perspective and digitizing that and linking it up with that larger system. Year one, we'd be looking for $100,000 to do this and for the scanning and then $25,000 for the document storage server. We have spoken to a firm that's on the state master price listing and this would fall in line with the first phase of that. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Counsel Jacome?
Hi, doing, Director Reiner. Who is the, is the vendor you're using? Is that ScanOptics or who do you intend to use?
We would look at a number of what other vendors are out there, but one vendor that we had contacted came right down, gave us some quotes, but we'd probably still go out to either bid or utilizing some type of, just a little bit of a better quoting system on it.
Okay. And just from my understanding, you're still going based off your retention rates, correct? You have retention for your documents? Okay.
Yes, yeah. A lot of things that we have, we do have to keep, let's say, a permanent file because we're the only holders of some of these records.
Okay. Thank you. Counsel Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Reiner. Thank you, Mr. Reiner. Can you, I don't see in here, or maybe I do, maintenance and service costs that, from the years going out. Is that, are those the numbers, the $100,000 in 2016?
So the $100,000 would be to continue scanning the documents. I don't see, other than just working with IT on upkeep of the general server and at some point needing to upgrade the server again whenever that's past its useful life. This isn't like, let's say, a software that we'd be getting as part of this. It would just be scanning documents and then we'd have digitized files of all of this.
So the entire cost of this project is 425 over the four years?
Correct, for both planning and public works.
And do you have the manpower to handle doing all of the scanning? Is that going to take a person to sit there and feed all these things into the scanner or how is that going to work?
No, so we'd be outsourcing that scanning. That's what the cost of this is. They'd come, take, you know, a few boxes, they'd scan it all in and then we'd have the digital files. So this is someone else doing it and working with our team just on what the files are.
Okay. And then what kind of capabilities does this give you? I mean, you said you're moving to an online permit system. How is, does that allow a resident to look up the site plan for their home or that kind of thing? Is that what you're talking about?
That's what we're hoping to do is to link all of this together through the Tyler Intergov software that we're going to be doing and having this extra data out there.
And do you see this as a benefit to you or to Public Works? Who's the primary benefit of this?
I think actually the public is the primary benefit of this because everything that we have now that people have to come in and ask for a file or look for things, it'll be at their fingertips. It will also certainly help us. It will help Public Works in that we will be able to search for things much quicker just from our computer and in the long run, it'll save storage space. We won't have to have everything on site. We can have it often in longer-term storage if we need to retain some of those records.
So if a resident's adding a porch or something, they can just, they'll not be able to sort of dial into the system from their house, putting the plants for the porch and that kind of thing?
Yeah, that's actually something different that we're already working on independently now, the online permitting software. That's something that has, was funded last year or two years ago through a CIP. This is taking our existing records that we have and scanning them in so that we'll be able to put them out on the web for people to access and to free up storage space for us.
And will this be tied into our GPS system? Do the two systems talk to each other?
The GIS you mean?
The GIS? Yes, that's what I meant.
We hope to be able to have everything all tied together. That is the plan with all of these systems that, you know, the Intergov is tied into the GIS and that all of these systems will talk and work hand in hand.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? I'm seeing none, so I'll call for a vote on $125,000. Counsel Cassiri?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Franco?
Yep.
Jones?
Yes.
Melendez is yes. McBride?
Yes.
Bordelon?
No.
Westerveld?
Yes.
Jacome?
Yes.
So I have eight in favor, one opposed, Bordelon, zero abstaining. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's just about 10 o'clock. I'd like to either take a break or if you want, if the council has...
It's 10 o'clock. Is there consensus from the council to continue?
I'm willing to go forward.
Continue the break?
After a break.
If we continue, we will have a break.
We're not that far. This is it. We have one, two, three, four, five, six left.
Yes, but we need a break.
Seven. We have eight because we have the water pollution control facility ones.
Oh, okay.
But those are typically, yeah, so I'm seeing consensus to continue, but we'll stand in recess for a little break at 10:01.
All right, the town is back from, the council's back from recess at 10:13. And we are on to AKA Economic Assistance Fund, page 243. I'll make a motion for $50,000.
Second.
Moved by Melendez, seconded by Borlon. All right?
Okay, so very quickly, this is a fund that the town has put a fair bit of money in during the past. This is a town, obviously funded, program that we help provide for construction of necessary public infrastructure improvements associated with new job-creating development opportunities in town. This is a reimbursable program, and the goal of this program is to retain support and entice new job-seeking, job-creating businesses to Groton by helping to pay for a portion of public infrastructure improvements that are generally extraordinary in nature and usually beyond the business's ability to pay. And these public improvements would support these businesses, but also others in the future if the business isn't at the site for a long time. But it can be anywhere from water and sewer line projects, electric telephone extensions, public sidewalks, road improvements, installation of traffic control devices, street lighting, drainage, you know, infrastructure. And usually, the funding for this is given annually through the CIP, and we do have program guidelines that were established by the town council, and the council authorizes all expenditures from this fund. It's something that is reviewed by the Economic Development Commission. They make a recommendation to the council, and the council is the end author, the group that makes the authorization for this. Number of projects in the past, SIFT, Grand Wine and Spirits, Bluff Village, Bluff Point Village, The Standard, and it's been very helpful getting those developments across the finish line. As of right now, we do have an uncommitted fund balance of $368,000, and happy to answer any questions.
Mayor, I was going to mention that, too, that, you know, if the town council's looking to cut something, we could go a year without this, but just sorting that out there.
Okay, thank you. Council Borlon?
Thank you. You answered most of the questions I was going to ask. I was going to ask examples of current developments that, you know, this money has been used for. Also, you answered that. I was going to ask, you know, was it something we could wait on? The other question is, is there any chance to, you know, is there anything in the write-up that these businesses that maybe become bigger over time and expand that they kind of help to give back to the fund? Is that part of this at all?
That is not part of this. I think, you know, when we've spoken to businesses, they generally say, well, you know, we pay our taxes, and that's the way how we give back. Also, the maximum, and this gets into the guidelines, the maximum amount that they can be given is linked to how much growth of the grand list that that business has or that property has compared to what they pay in taxes today.
And when is the last time we allocated funds to someone?
I believe the last one was The Standard in downtown Mystic.
Do you remember when that was?
It was probably, oh, two years ago.
Okay. I'll move a number of zero.
Second, Franco.
Motion by Borlon, seconded by Franco, zero dollars. Council Borlon, you have two and a half minutes left.
That's fine, or I'll take away my next term, whatever. It's basically just what it was stated. It hasn't been used in two and a half, two years, two and a half years. You know, there's still money sitting in the account. It's not that I'm not in support of this item. I just think that this is the year that we should consider, and that's my reason. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Franco?
Thank you. I was going to put the motion on the floor myself, and I think it's already been explained that it's not necessary this year. So I think, as you said, it won't hurt to skip this for one year. So I'm in favor of zero.
Thank you. Any further discussion? Okay, so I'm seeing none, so I'll call for a vote. Council Cassiri?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Franco?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Melendez is yes. McBride?
Yes.
Borlon?
Sorry, I cut out a little bit. I just wanted to make sure that the number on the floor is zero, correct?
Correct.
Yes, I'm a yes.
Westerville?
Yes.
Chacon?
Yes.
I have nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. Okay, on to A E, Open Space Acquisition, page 244. I'll make a motion for $25,000.
Second.
Seconded by Westerville.
So again, another number that we put out there every year, this one here, the Open Space Acquisition. So this is some funding that we try to build up over time so that we have money for matching funds, for any grants. Having funding in this account is what made it possible for us to close on the Wolfbrook deal, as well as additional allocation from the council and fundraising, grants, et cetera. But this is really kind of the seed money for a lot of that. As of right now, our balance in this account is $27,000. Most of that funding came from fee in lieu of dollars from a subdivision in town. But again, we use this for open space grant matching, as well as any surveying that we have to do with the property boundaries, appraisals for open space acquisition. Happy to answer any questions?
I make a motion for zero.
Second, Franco.
I've got a motion by Parker and a second by Franco for zero.
I believe we can hold off on this one.
Okay. Council Borlon?
I was thinking of moving at zero as well. I think after the Wolfbrook property, I think we did really do a significant purchase, and it was over the original cost that we wanted to. And so it was great. I was in support of it. It was great to have that addition of property. But I just wanted to ask, you know, would this hurt anything by holding on to 25 for one year?
I don't see anything that would hurt. If some spectacular opportunity came along, we could easily come up with 25 during the year, so.
Yes, then I would feel comfortable then waiting. How about from the presenter? What is his thought on waiting?
It's totally up to the council on how you want to proceed on this.
If the 25 was to go here, I mean, what, is there anything on the horizon that, you know, maybe we're missing, or?
No, I don't, there's, there are some properties that we've been approached on by other partners, more looking for possibility through some grants, but nothing that we've started conversations on, really.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? Okay, I'm seeing none. So for CIP A B, I'll call for a vote on the zero dollars. Council Cassiri?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Franco?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Melendez is no. McBride?
No.
Borlon?
I'm going to be a no.
Westerville?
No.
Chacon?
Yes.
All right, so I have this, carrying five in favor, four opposed, Melendez, Borlon, McBride, Westerville, zero abstaining. So zero dollars carries. On to 8C, Gateway Way Finding Sign Project.
I'll move $75,000.
Second.
Moved by Chacon, seconded by Jones. Director Reiner?
Yes, so this is another project that we've been working on for multiple years. We had done a wayfinding signage plan a number of years back, and we have slowly been implementing that plan. I think, as many of you have seen, a lot of our signage around town has been being replaced for some of the directionals, as well as the building identification. Unfortunately, most recently, one of the more prominent signs that we had at the intersection of Route 1 and 117 was struck by a car. We're working on getting that replaced through with the insurance. But that was one good example of some of the signage that we're looking, that we have replaced. We are continuing to look at additional wayfinding signage around town, some better directional signage, working with Connecticut DOT, and that is what some of this would be paying for inside the town. Again, happy to answer any questions on this one. And this is one we have looked around for grants. We have not been able to find any money, or very much money, to help with this. In the past, I think we were able to get a little bit of other funding for it, but we haven't found anything else that's out there recently.
I'd like to move a number.
Sure.
I'd like to move zero.
Second for discussion.
I got a motion by Council Borlon and a second by Parker for zero dollars. All right, would you like to speak to it?
Sure. You know, I appreciate the momentum, and I think, you know, it's a great idea. Unfortunately, the, you know, the project that got plowed down, there was a lot of concern, and I was one of them that spoke at the time, that, you know, what I, what I thought we were getting and what we got didn't match to me. Most people that go off the highway aren't looking for the town hall annex. And so for me, people have reached out to me overwhelmingly and thinking, unfortunately, that it was a beautiful sign, but it was a waste for that intersection. I did send a referral in asking for the sign to carry things like Fitch High School, Groton Middle School, Grasso, or Bluff Point, which is a big driver. Everybody goes to Bluff Point, gets Dairy Queen, but we need people to kind of come down the strip. Most people aren't typically looking for your police department or your town hall annex. Most people that use those are more local. There are some outliers, maybe some developers or some surveyors that look for those areas. Usually, they know where those are. But a lot of people that hit that T-mark are looking for Mystic, looking for Haley Farm, looking for Bluff Point, looking for Esther Point Beach. So I just, until this comes before the council, I just don't feel comfortable voting on anything right now. I think we need to hold fast, fix the ones we have, and kind of redirect and make sure that we are on a path that we, at least I can support, and at least have it up for discussion. I never remember really voting on what was going to go on the sign as far as the names or the waypoint. So that would be the reason that I'm going to vote this down tonight. I think we need to come back to the drawing table. I did send a referral, but unfortunately, has not made it to the table as of yet. Thank you.
Council Franco?
So the sign that, at Route 117 and Route 1, does that have anything to do with this funding?
No.
And we've, we...
Well, it has to do with the funding in the past, but not this.
Not tonight's funding, correct?
Not tonight's funding, correct.
And we funded previously to do signage, I think, from the Mystic area. Is that correct?
There was some money for signage in the Mystic area. It was more for a study of signage in the Mystic area. We were able to get a grant from DEEP to do a little bit of the signage around there also.
And then what is, where is this going to cover? What areas?
So this is townwide and including the city of Groton. This would be paying for additional directional signage for things like Bluff Point, City Hall, and Golf Course, and other points of interest, you know, Avery Point, Yukon, et cetera. And we're happy to come talk to the council about the rest of the signage program in the near future.
Is this imperative that we keep the funding on track, or would one year set you back, and would it be horrible?
We've skipped some years in the past. This is something we would like to keep some momentum. You know, it's, yeah, that's a tough one to answer. We do, you know, we have been working towards getting additional signs, doing some of the specs on those, and getting that ready to go. But it would be contingent upon funding, so it would put further progress on hold.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Council Parker?
So for the next two years, the 75, well, 150 total, would that complete everything?
I believe that is the completion of the program as we originally had it laid out.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Council Cassiri?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director Reiner, would these new signs be in the same style and design as the other signs that were recently put up?
Yes.
Great, because I will say that they are, they stand out. And I know that the signs that we have up, the kind of bland signs for Bluff Point and stuff, you know, they kind of blend in. So I think it would be important to be able to have those in that more bold wayfinding signage that the new signs have been in. Thank you.
Yeah, and you're welcome. And Connecticut DOT wants us to do kind of the next phase of signs all in one fell swoop. They don't want to have some signs up and not the complete destination through to the end point. So we kind of, we've been trying to do some of the bigger signs, directional signs, as we could, but the next couple of components will have a lot more moving pieces to them in a sense.
Great.
They won't be moving signs, I want to be very clear.
Understood. I think that it would also be a little confusing if we had all these signs in kind of two different styles, and this would kind of complete the whole process. So thank you.
Council Borlon?
Thank you. Yeah, in no way was I saying that they're directly linked, and, or I'm not in support of this. What I'm doing is looking at this from a fiscally conservative standpoint. We are still coming off of COVID. We just allocated our funds to our restrooms and other things, and I feel the signs' direction at this point in time, I do think, like, they're beautiful. They look great. They pop. We haven't had anything like it. But the plan of what they, the way they started, the one on, down by the walking clinic, People Health Center, has nothing on it, just says, well, to Groton, and the one at the end, sent you the police department town hall annex and the, you know, the town hall. And, you know, so I just want to make sure we're on the right path. And so my vote would be, let's take a hold, let's reassess, let's come up with a plan, and, you know, get these up. reassess, let's come up with a plan, and, you know, get these up to their full glory, because I do think they're great, but could it hold one year, some signs, on the back of the taxpayer? Absolutely, I do think it can. There's a lot of other things we funded, some things we even increased, and this is something I do, I have to look for cuts somewhere, and it may not pass, but I, you know, again, it's not all about what passes, it's about what's right, and that's the way that I feel. But it in no way depicts or diminishes the efforts, the quality, but I do think some more direction and some, you know, more forethought, you know, to kind of talk a little bit more about it would be helpful, though. That would be my vote down for this, and I think we come back around the drawing board, you know, months in advance before the budget, and get this voted on. Maybe there's some grants possibly, you know, through, you know, have we looked into any of that for this?
Yes, we have.
Yeah, so maybe in the new year, there'll be some more, maybe reach out to our state local reps and let them know that we need, you know, help with this, we want to kind of continue the process. But I did, you know, send something out as a referral, and I do think that we, we could take a pause for a moment and just gather and see where we're at, and, you know, make sure we're going in the right direction. That's all. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Jacome?
Director Reiner, do you believe that signage is beneficial for our planning and our economic development?
Oh, definitely. This was one of the items that was identified in our economic development strategy, and actually even the market analysis, one of the first steps that we did when I started working here, of just making sure people know how to get around town, because there is a lot of confusion between the town, the city, knowing Groton, Long Point, Mystic. What town is Mystic? Isn't that its own town? You know, these questions happen all the time, so I think we all know that Mystic is not its hometown, but it, it is helpful from a planning and economic development standpoint, so people have clarity. We are a large tourist destination. We have 27,000 jobs in the town, and over 80% of those people don't live here, so they don't know all the intricacies of Groton, and this type of signage does help get those people around, so even though they might not live here, they still spend some money here, which helps all of our, our local businesses.
Thank you. And my final question is, do you currently think we have too much signage at this point?
The wayfinding signage, no. I, I think there's always ways to improve signage in other areas.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Point of information?
Sure.
Um, I just, I have my question is, is the sign that got plowed down, how is that driving economics?
It helps people know where to go if they are going to be applying for a building permit, if they want to get around town. That sign replaced an older sign, which stated many of the same things, and that sign was pretty worn down and beat looking, and when people see that the community's not investing in itself, it doesn't often make them want to invest in the community either.
Thank you. Counselor Casiri?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to clarify, Director Reiner, that the signs for FYE 2024 were going to include more of the popular destinations, correct?
Correct.
And about how many signs would the $75,000 fund?
You know, it's a variety of sizes and shapes. You know, for example, the sign that was knocked down, or I just saw an estimate come across in my email today, or yes, no, today, because today's Monday. See, I'm confused, having a council meeting on the Monday, I'm sure you all are also. I think that sign, that one sign for fabrication install was around $10,000.
Okay, but we're, we're not going to get, like, two signs out of the $75,000?
No, you are not, and that was a, a big prominent sign. You will not be getting two signs for $75,000. You'll be getting a lot of signs. They're going to be a lot more smaller and medium-sized signs, again, getting some directions for people to some of these more popular destination points.
Thank you for clarifying that.
You're welcome.
Just another point of interest.
Sure.
At that intersection, you have the Police Department Town Hall Annex. How, how are those big billboard going to get them to those smaller signs? I guess that's my question. I'm just trying to understand the plan, so I'm trying to, I come off that thing, I see Police Department left, Town Hall Annex right.
Thank you, thank you. You've asked your question. Director Reiner?
I'm just trying to help how this is going to get them to that $10,000 sign.
Director Reiner, Counselor Bordelon, you've asked your question. Director Reiner?
So there'll be other signs that are installed. Some of them might be coming off of Route 95 at 117 and other locations, so Connecticut DOT doesn't want us to put up a sign that directs us to Bluff Point from one point if we don't have all of the signs for that entire, to the end point, being installed as part of the program. The same goes for Yukon, Avery Point, and many others, so there's other signs that are going to be installed, larger or, you know, midsize, smaller signs that are going to then be directing people to those other destination points.
Thank you. Okay. I'm seeing no further discussion. And with that, we'll vote on zero dollars. Counselor Casiri?
No.
Counselor Parker?
No.
Counselor Franco?
No.
Counselor Jones?
No.
Melendez is no. McBride?
No.
Bordelon?
Yes.
Westerville?
No.
Jacome?
No.
Okay, so that fails. One in favor, Bordelon, eight opposed, zero abstaining. Okay, now we have $75,000 on the floor. Counselor Casiri?
Yes.
Counselor Parker?
Yes.
Counselor Franco?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Melendez is yes. McBride?
Yes.
Bordelon?
No.
Okay, so Bordelon's no.
Yes.
Westerville's yes. Jacome?
Yes.
Jacome is yes. Okay. So I have eight in favor, one opposed, Bordelon, zero abstaining for $75,000. Thank you.
Thank you.
Onto eight D. Downtown Mystic Parking Management. That's page 246, and I'll make a motion for $150,000.
Second.
Moved by Melendez and seconded by Bordelon.
So this is an item that we've brought to you in the past. We've had a lot of dialogue, incredibly well-attended public meeting about two months ago in downtown Mystic on the Groton side. We had well over 80, probably close to 100 people in attendance from both sides of the bridge, and, you know, we heard a lot of voices from a lot of different people, but I, I do believe the, the majority of people understand the need to manage parking in downtown Mystic. This funding, if approved, would help us move towards on-street metered parking, shared lot, lot parking agreements, the employee and limited resident parking permit program, still moving ahead with the valet as well, parking policy, and some type of electronic handheld parking enforcement management system. Again, if this funding was approved, we would not just go out and do it. I do think that there's still more conversations and approvals, authority we need from the council on the direction of it, but this would get us in the direction so that we know we're committed to getting it done.
I'd like to move a number.
Sure.
Zero?
Second, Westerville.
Got a motion by Counselor Bordelon and a second by Westerville for zero dollars. Would you like to speak to it?
Yeah, Stonington voted this down, correct?
That is correct. Though they do, they did. Sorry.
Well, go ahead.
I was just going to say, First Selectwoman Cheesebro has said she, she's going to talk to the police board about potentially bringing it back for another vote.
Right, as of right now, I mean, one of the things that was presented to us, when it came to us several times, was that Stonington's moving quickly, Groton needs to make a decision so that we're all off step, and it didn't move over there, and it doesn't mean that it's right or wrong, I just, you can't have one without the other, and I think until there's a joint decision, it will look awful if one side, everyone will park on one side, it'll be flooded. So I just would encourage the council, a vote no would not mean that you're not for this. It's, if it's not together in, in unity, it will look very displaced and unorganized. I think there's more research to be done as exactly what it should look like, and like to look at all the notes, finding out why it was voted down, what some of those notes look like, and I think we need to do more collaboration, more outreach, and come back to the table at another point. It does not mean that I'm not saying that there's no parking problem. There is. I don't know that this particular plan is wrong or right. I do think that there's some more work to be done, and I'm, I'm afraid to hold up funds, and, you know, the same argument that was brought to us by this here body that's bringing it before us stated, they are moving and we need to move with them, and we tried to do that, and in fact, their side did not support it, so I caution the council with that. But again, that would be my reason for now, and I do think we need to come up with a plan, and I think the notes and all the work that's been done and the connect and linkability is important. Suggestions, you know, the cost of this could help fund the cost of getting the seat bus to drop off off of Allen Street and come down. We have no connectability for transportation down there as of now, which will help grow the economics and maybe decrease in workers driving vehicles down there. As a local, I would actually take that bus from Groton to Mystic, and I don't have that option, and it also decreases our carbon footprint, so I do think that there's a need and a discussion that needs to happen, and I do not think in this budget item we are ready to make a crucial decision, even though I wish we were. Thank you.
Mayor? I'm kind of torn on this one myself. If Stonington hadn't voted yet, I would say I definitely want to move forward. I'm not confident they're going to get the positive vote. So I lean a little towards holding off. Either there's talk from the state doing their own look at the parking. We also have to look at better practices and how to get people to pay, looking at ticket prices, so I lean towards holding off. If Stonington suddenly, however, got the vote to move forward, or moving forward, I would ask to bring it back for, because, because we know within one year, these funds will be paid back if you put the meters in, so I lean towards holding off.
Do you know when they will vote again? Or is that not?
I think she's, as far as I know, she hasn't gone back to the police commission yet.
Okay. All right. Any discussion? Counselor Westerville?
Thank you very much. I also am not really comfortable with the idea of metered parking downtown. I think something has to be done. However, I, I work with meters. They're not as bulletproof as you'd like. I don't think the return on investment is going to be quite what we expect when we have to worry about the maintenance to, or the maintenance personnel to support these machines, and then we also have to worry about the enforcement. The enforcement is one of the biggest things. You'll get people from out of town, they'll come in, they'll get a ticket, they'll leave. Next time they come, they'll bring a different car, so they're not going to pay their tickets. So I just don't feel we have a good plan moving forward at this point, and the fact that in Stonington, if you're going to have free parking on the Stonington side, and you're going to have paid parking on the Groton side, Stonington's relatively flat, they have a lot of side streets where you can do all the parking, or, excuse me, all parking. You meter downtown, you push people to the outskirts, they're going to be walking up and down hills, that's going to be, that's not going to be beneficial to the local residents to have to keep walking up and down those hills. We're going to lose folks from our older generations. They're not going to walk downtown if they don't have a place, if they don't, can't drive down to park, so I'm not in favor of this at all. Thank you.
Counselor McBride?
I'm struggling with this because I'm not necessarily in favor of the details of this component, but I feel like we're kind of sidestepping and not moving forward, trying to solve the issue that we've had for many, many years. So is there any possibility that we could fund this amount and, and have it available for future use of the Planning Department, even if they come up with something else? I mean, I feel like, to cut this, we're kind of saying we're not trying to solve the issue. That's, that's, or, or are you, are you going to come back and, you know, I just feel like we should still be moving down, moving down the path to try to solve the, the issue.
No, I totally agree. It's a major issue, but, you know, with the way this is going, it might take several more years before we have a firm plan, so, you know, whatever the council feels, but I think it could hold off for a year. Or, or midway if we came up with a plan, you know.
But the administration, you're still moving forward, trying to solve the issue.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
We don't need to, this funding is not indicative of, we're not trying to solve. We're not, not trying to solve, we're still trying to move forward.
Right, but if Stonington can't get the vote to do meters, that's pretty well dead. You know, we'll have to look at another option, so.
So if something comes forward, you'll come back to the council and say we're?
Oh, for sure, yeah.
Thank you.
Counselor Bordelon?
Oh, thank you. I'm not allowed to have two motions on the floor. Maybe another counselor might want to put the $15,000 of the planning and engineer down. That at least locks that, so they don't have to go back around the table, and if Stonington starts to move, we have that part done, because you're not going to need the $135,000 until that 15 is done anyway, and the planning and construct, planning and engineer can take, I guess I'll ask town staff, how long would planning and engineer take? Roughly?
So right now, we're still working with John Burke, our consultant on it. He's run a lot of the numbers and design scenarios. You know, with that $15,000, we could look at some other options, some additional outreach. It certainly would help, it would help keep the ball moving forward if, if the council wanted to set aside the $15,000.
Yep. That's what I, that's what I was thinking. I'm thinking the $15,000 says that we're still, we're still tasting this, we're still wanting it, but we, we need, we've got to see what Stonington's doing, and then we could always move to the 135 of construction, because the planning and engineering could change after Stonington revotes or what they decide. We have that $15,000 ready to go. As, as Counselor McBride stated, it keeps us moving in that direction for a very low cost and a very low percent on our tax, you know, on our tax base to our community. And then if something start, does start to engineer and get moving, we have that $15,000 ready, and when construction can come, it might not be to the next tax season anyway, so it might be no urgency or rush. Why lock up a bunch of funds on the sake of the tax, the back of the taxpayer? I say 15 is a good option, and I would throw that number on if nobody else does, once mine fails or wins, or goes up, but I would encourage someone to throw $15,000 down, unless I'm able to, which I, I think you guys said we only can do one motion per person, so, is that correct?
Yep.
Yeah, so if anyone would like to, you got my second.
Thank you. Counselor Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've been public, pretty public on saying that I support public parking meters in downtown. Most of it is, I just want something to happen. You know, there's just a lot of inaction, nobody's doing anything, so we need something to start going. Mr. Reiner, on looking at the list of things that you were doing, street, and I'll just go back to the parking thing for a second, you know, every place that I've traveled with are parking meters, there's no, people just assume you're going to be paying for parking somewhere, so I don't see that as something that gets in the way of visitors. Mr. Reiner, on the items like shared lot parking agreements, employee unlimited resident parking permit programs, and valet parking, those are all things that you could move forward, possibly with the $15,000 that Counselor Bordelon has mentioned, that have nothing to do with parking or working with Stonington or anything like that. Is that correct?
Correct. We can still continue to move forward on those.
And would the $15,000 allow you to kind of do the planning and establish those kinds of things?
I, I, I think we can certainly make some headway on all of those, you know, again, one of the tricky parts, it's chicken and egg, of which comes first, because some of those other, the valet, the employee, without the incentive of the meters and the enforcement of it, it gets a little bit, a little bit more tricky, but if that's how we put our toe in the water, and people see that it, it, it helps work, it helps take some pressure off of it, I think that's a great first step.
I mean, I think it, it just kind of gets, for me, it just kind of gets the ball moving and gets us doing something, just making some statement on some part of it and showing we are doing something. Mr. Burke, do you concur that those three items would be okay to, it's the parking thing that has sort of messed us up with Stonington, but the other things are kind of soft.
Yeah, and I intend to the traffic authority to look at possibility of residential permit parking, that type of thing, for places that don't have driveways, that type of thing.
So it's sort of the non-threatening way of moving forward without, without anything. So I'll put, I'll echo Counselor Bordelon on this, and put the $15,000 number on the floor.
Second.
I have a motion by Jones and a second by Bordelon for $15,000. I have a motion by Jones and a second by Bordelon for 15,000.
And with the, with the hope that we just can get something going, we show some action on it, some things so that people see some, that something's happening, and we can just basically start doing some activity, so.
Thank you. Council Franco?
Thank you. What I just heard from Director Reiner was, with all these other things off the table, to do anything is going to be extremely hard, because the incentive of having the meters there is, isn't going to be there. So trying to do the valet and all this other stuff, he just said, it's, how is he going to get any of this done? Me personally, I support the zero. I mean, we haven't even had, we have had a discussion at our council, but we have not made any decisions at our council. So basically, we're making the decision here tonight, for at least the funding part of it. We haven't even made a decision on which direction to go or what we want to do. I mean, yeah, there's problems in Mystic, but what I have been repeatedly been told, if one side doesn't do it, it's not going to work for the other side. So to even put $15,000 and tie up that money, and he just said, it's going to make it so difficult to even figure out how to do that, to see it, you're just tying up money to tie it up. If something does come forward in the future and Stonington decides to move forward and we choose not to for whatever reason, then that's on them, but I don't want to just move forward on something because what Stonington does, I mean, their people voted. They came out and voted, and the people said no. Never mind the elected officials, what they wanted, that their people said no. So I'm not so, I don't know what Groton people would say about this. So me personally, I have heard a lot of people who have told me, do not put meters in in Mystic. That's what they have directly told me. So I personally will be supporting your zero number. Thank you very much.
Counsel Cassiri?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Burt, if we don't allocate any money today, the, the research isn't going to stop, correct? You just said that the traffic authority was going to look at certain things.
Yeah, we'll be still looking at things, because I do think some residents need relief, so.
Okay. I am also comfortable with the amount of zero dollars, because I, I think we still have too many questions to be allocating any money towards this. We have questions with Stonington, we have questions with the research that the traffic authority is going to do, and I agree that the council has not had significant conversations about this item. Thank you.
Counsel Jacob?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I'm, yeah, last I knew, or at least recently being on the council, there hasn't been much conversation in the direction they're going. I do think like we're either tiptoeing or we're not, but I am conflicted on whether or not, you know, in the future, moving forward, if we're going to constantly, constantly be waiting on Stonington, I don't think there's a point, there seems like they, you know, their people came out, they voted no, but at some point, either we're going to have to take, take the lead here and move forward, whether or not, if the council decides. So that's where I'm conflicted. But right now, I could support the zero, as, because even the director and town manager agreed with zeroing it out. Thank you.
And if some great idea came forward that we could use 15,000, we'd bring it to the council whenever that came up, so, you know, I don't think it's a big loss not to have the 15,000.
Is the council interested in the third round of speaking? I'm seeing no, no, no takers for third round of speaking. I'll speak briefly here just on this. I think, I understand both arguments for this. The one, the one thing I will say about voting no here is that Stonington's going to know that we voted no, and us voting no is almost certainly going to make them a no vote, so, sort of, if you want something to happen, voting no tonight is probably going to inevitably make Stonington also be a no vote. If we vote yes, then Stonington might, might say Groton did it, so we'll do it too. Or they might vote no again. It, it's all up in the air, but what I do know is if we vote no here today, Stonington will probably be a no. I don't think that's necessarily an, an argument to, to fund it fully, I'm just saying that at some point, this, we've had this on bridges and other things, getting both towns to fund the thing on the same time is a very difficult prospect, and, you know, maybe just doing our part is, is the best course of action. But, Counsel Parker?
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Burt, they already had their vote, correct?
Yes.
The people have to go out and vote on their budget. It's not like what we do here. They have like a referendum, and they have to go out and vote. So they voted down their budget for this, so they said no, so I'm going to say no. So at this time, we don't have a firm plan, and we all have to work together on this.
Okay.
It was a referendum, not even a budget.
Yeah, that was going to say, I thought you meant to vote on the referendum. I don't think they voted on, I don't think it's in the budget.
It wasn't a budget vote, it was a referendum. I'm sorry. The people came out to vote specifically on this topic.
Okay. Counsel Jones?
Um, I'll just, one of the problems that we have with the Stonington vote is that we think they voted against the parking meters, they actually didn't really vote against the parking meters, they voted against the parking meters plus Clyde's apple cider mill, it was combined together. So the people came out against what was going on in Clyde's, they probably should have separated the two and made a parking vote and a Clyde's vote.
Point of information, point of information.
Okay. Counsel Jones has the floor.
So I just, it's, the two things were pushed together in their vote, and so I don't know whether they're, I, they probably would have voted against the parking meters too, but I, it's not affirmed that they went against the parking meters, because it was combined with the Clyde's cider mill vote and parking on that street, so.
Just to be clear, there, it's not that there was any mention of Clyde's, they also were looking at increasing their parking fees as well as, parking fines, as well as removing car, being able to remove cars from right of ways. The thought among some residents over there was that was to clear out traffic along the road that Clyde's is on, so it may have mixed the issue some. I do know some people were saying that over there, so.
Point of information.
Sure.
Are the statements that were just made, are they opinion based, or are they scientifically like proven? Were people at the polls polled to find out why they voted the way they voted?
I, I believe, okay, but to be fair, we, we are here to give our opinions, so.
Counsel Jones, you have the floor.
Yeah, so I just, you know, I, my, I'm still thinking that something needs to move forward, and, you know, whether it's valet parking or something, it's just, just there's a lot of inaction on this, and I just get, I get frustrated, because if you go into the meetings in Mystic, you know, Coffee with the Cops or other places, it's all about parking, it's all they talk about, is parking, parking, and they want us to do something, and we've done nothing, other than just have continual study after continual study and public hearing. So I just, I'm just sort of frustrated, I'd like to see something happen, even if it's just the simplest thing, just to have some step that we've taken to do something, so, that's right.
Thank you. Counsel McBride?
Yeah, I, I again want to reiterate, I completely agree with Counselor Jones on, on his stance. I, I mean, I, I think as a councillor, I want to put money into buckets that can be used at a later date, that's deemed appropriate, to try to solve issues that we have, and that is one of the most significant issues we have. So I'm in full support of 15, I probably would have liked 25, just to give a little bit more money, in case it's needed to try to solve this gargantuan issue that we have. And another note, we've cut $574,000 from this budget so far to date, so I think 15,000 is not, I think that's a reasonable amount to put back into it with all the reductions that have been made. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Cassiri?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It's my opinion that I'm voting for zero tonight, because I don't think we should be allocating any tax dollars until the council has been able to have a conversation about this item with the, the vote outcome from Stonington. Things have changed, I think we need a new direction, and I think that we are going to have to have a conversation as a council as to how this is going to go now. Thank you.
Just going to mention, I was just reading the paper, that Clyde's thing is actually was designed, they say specifically it was designed to address Clyde, so it is actually a fact, so. Not why they voted, but why that those items were there.
Thank you. Counsel Westerville?
I'm still obviously in favor of the zero, and I'm also in favor of, you know, continuing to talk to our constituents. I, I talk to people, a lot of times when my wife and I are downtown, we talk to people. Parking is, as you say, one of the biggest issues that we've got, and I ask, what, you know, what are your ideas for a solution? First thing they say is, they can't do parking meters, and then they're, but I don't know what the real solution is. I think we still have a lot of talking to do, and our talking about it doesn't cost anything, and I think that's where we ought to leave it. Thank you.
All right.
Okay, I'm not seeing any further discussion, so I'll call for a vote first on $15,000.
Counsel Cassiri?
No.
Counsel Parker?
No.
Counsel Franco?
No.
Counsel Jones?
Yes.
Melendez is yes. McBride?
Yes.
Bordelon? You're muted?
I'm a yes.
Westerville?
No.
Jacob?
No.
Okay, so I have this failing four in favor, Melendez, Bordelon, Jones, McBride, and five opposed, zero abstaining. So next we will take up zero. Okay, one second.
Yes.
Counselor Parker?
Yes.
Counsel Franco?
Yes.
Counsel Jones?
Uh, no.
Melendez is no. McBride?
No.
Bordelon?
I'm a yes.
Uh, Westerville?
Yes.
Jacob?
Yes.
Okay, so I have this carrying, six in favor, three opposed, Melendez, Jones, McBride, zero abstaining. That's zero. On to AE?
Make a motion for $95,000.
Okay, Mystic Coastal Access Trail and Signage Program, page 247, I got a motion by Franco and a second by Bordelon for 95,000.
So this is a plan we've been working on for a number of years. We had done a coastal access wayfinding signage plan for the Mystic Coastal Access Trail. That trail right now is only in bits and pieces. Through land development projects we've gotten over the years, and what we are looking for, program for fund of $95,000, is for the design permitting installation of kiosks, as well as new signage at key entrance points to the access trail, as well as signage on the ground and on dock pilings. This is an issue, the past year, we haven't been able to put as much effort into it as we would have liked, due to a little bit of a staff shortage for the planner that was working on this. We do have a person in that position now, who has a, a big background in coastal access to the shore, and that's something we've been starting to meet with some folks to get this ball rolling again.
Thank you. Counsel Parker?
What will the maintenance cost be on the kiosk?
Um, I think the signs are designed to, that they'll last probably, you know, 20 years or so, hopefully without any graffiti or things like that, but there, these are not, you know, digital signs, this is things that we hope will stick around for some time.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Counsel Bordelon?
Uh, thank you. Um, you know, I know Mr. Fitzgerald used to always talk about coastal access and signage. I'm still getting letters in the mail, and I know he's very passionate about it, so. My question is, so do we pay Kent Ross to develop this plan?
Yes.
And how do we choose, I guess I'm just trying to understand, because we're bidding on a number here, we never get, like, I, I guess I don't feel like I'm in the loop as to like, well, is there a visual of this plan? I remember the original wayward signing, but I, you know, sometimes it's nice with these CIPs, we can attach, an image would be nice, you know, it doesn't have to be all text, you know, based, it would be nice to kind of visualize what we're, what we're voting on. Is, is there any visual on this section of what being proposed here?
Yeah, there actually is a coastal access signage plan, it's on our webpage, we've presented to the, to the council, I think, a couple of times, and we do plan on doing some additional public outreach and even refinement on some of the designs of these signs with the council moving forward.
Great, so I have that here, that, I have the, because I remember being at those meetings, can you direct me towards where the kiosk is located in this presentation? Because I'm trying to visualize the kiosk, which I don't see in here at all. Because I did review it before, I do apologize, but I don't.
So the, the installation of kiosks, so the kiosks were those ones that were like the ship's knees, that had a, a little bit of a larger sign on it?
Okay, so these are not digital kiosks?
These are not digital kiosks, no, these are pylon signs with like a fabricated wood product or something that appears like wood, that would be like the ship's knee, kind of owing to the historic big shipbuilding in Mystic.
Okay, yeah, all right, I guess I, I was missing the kiosk, and I think of a kiosk as a little, like, sign that's kind of ever-changing, that you can walk up and manipulate, push, but I do remember the, the signs up on the pylons, so I do remember that. Thank you for clarifying that.
You're welcome.
Um, okay, um, I guess I just, you know, I'm just, just checking just on that piece. Thank you, I, I'm in support of coastal access, I think it's, you know, our coastal access is always being taken away, and if we don't properly sign it, over time, people kind of just kind of take over things. I know that there's a lot of the signs were being taken down, and how are we doing with that, and how are we going to invest money into this and protect them from being taken down, I guess is what I'm concerned about, once we put them up, the money.
Yeah, that's something we just always have to be diligent about. We've been getting some signs put back up and working with property owners to make sure that they stay up, and it's something that we just have to always stand on top of.
So, and with that, would these signs be heavily documented in some type of database or in paper somewhere, long after I'm here, long after you're here, long after we're all here, that someone can go back and they have to go, well, where'd the sign go? Well, it's not there. We should have it photographed, documented, stamped, exactly where the access is that we know, so that we don't ever lose it.
Yeah, and, and we do have a photo inventory of our historical signs that we have through downtown Mystic. We also have the site plans and the notes and locations on those plans of where the signage was supposed to be, and it, it's still always a conversation with sometimes those property owners.
Sorry, I didn't mean to talk over you, I apologize, a little lag. Is there a map at all, like pinpointing each of them, like with a little bit of a, you know, just a locator as well?
Uh, so on the kiosks, it actually would show where all the access points were, within the coastal access signage plan, it does show where all the signs are proposed, and ones that we do have the legal right to put those signs up.
On a map as well?
Yes, and that's within that wayfinding signage plan that is on our webpage.
I mean, I think this is a good economic driver, to get some of the people off the sidewalks and open up some walkways and, you know, kind of get people to kind of, you know, dig deeper into some other areas of downtown, so I think this is a, this has been a long coming plan that you've gained on. Is this including though, those markers on the road that you guys spoke of? Because that part, I don't know, that I wasn't fully in favor of, that's, that's my caveat.
Yeah, and we don't have to do everything, so those, that was a component of it, because there are some areas where it would be helpful to have some type of marker on the road, but again, before we would go out to do the construction on this, we do need some more feedback from the council and from the public, so this is not one of those things that, if you give us the funds, we're going to go put it out to bid and not come back to the council.
Thank you, that was my next thing, and yes, I, I agree, I think a lot of these CIPs, I feel like we haven't been updated on them in a while, and I think with new councillors and stuff, we need to, so anytime we can do this before.
Counsel's time has expired.
All right, I'll just say, if we can do this before we vote on it, it's helpful, but if it's going to be after?
Thank you.
I hope we can do that soon, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Okay, I'm seeing none, so I'll call for a vote on $95,000. Counselor Casiri?
Yes.
Parker?
Abstain.
Okay, Franco?
You can come back to me.
Jones?
Uh, yes.
Melendez is yes. McBride?
Yes.
Bordelon?
Uh, I'm torn.
Okay, Westerville?
Yes.
Jacome?
Yes.
Okay, Franco?
Yes.
Bordelon?
I'm going to abstain only because I feel like I'm voting on a plan that I haven't seen in a while.
So I have seven in favor, zero opposed, two abstaining, Bordelon and Parker. Good, okay, that carries at $95,000.
Uh, point of information?
Sure.
Uh, town manager, when are we going to, though my reason for my extension is because I just haven't seen.
Counselor Bordelon, we don't, we don't give reasons, the debate portion, the debate portion is where you give the reason for your vote, we're no longer debating.
My point of information is when is this going to make it to the agenda? I think it's, we're voting on things we haven't seen in forever.
Okay, we do not have the answer for that right now. All right, we are on to, we are on to Capital Project AF on page 248.
Make a motion for $150,000.
Second.
I've got a motion by Counselor Franco and a second by Counselor Parker for $150,000.
Okay, so last but not least, of all of our CIP projects, this is the most important one that we have before you. We are asking for $150,000. We could spend a lot more, but I think this is enough for us to hire a consultant to assist us in rewriting our plan of conservation and development. This is a document that, as required by state law, has to do an update every 10 years. Our last plan was updated in 2016. That plan was actually started, I think sometime around 2012, but it took some time to get that plan through the process, through steering committees and adopted. There was also a little bit of a change in the guard within my department, and I think that stalled things up a bit. So for those of you that don't know, the Plan of Conservation and Development is the long-range visionary document developed with, you know, a lot of input from residents, property owners, business owners, and land use commissions. It's adopted by the Planning and Zoning Commission, and it really sets the framework for how Bronham will grow and change over the next 10, 20, 30 years. As closely as it's practical, it really reflects what the community consensus is on all aspects of future growth in the town, and helps guide future development, regulation changes, ordinance changes, the grants that we apply for, and really set the framework for much of what we do as a, as a department, as a lot of departments, as an administration, as a community. The plan takes somewhere between 18 and 24 months to develop, process through public hearings, outreach, and adoption by the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thank you. Counselor Casiri?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director Reiner, this sounds like a very intricate, specialized, and extensive document. This isn't obviously something that anyone in your department can do on their own, this has to be done by a consultant.
Correct.
Very good, thank you.
And, you know, one of the points I should put out there is, I would have asked for a lot more money to get this done, but because there's some other projects that we're going to be doing around the same time, I think we'll be able to weave some of that data as well as that outreach into this project, which will help us get a little bit of, a little bit better bank, or a much better bank for the buck, I should say, because otherwise, in a municipality of our size, communities can spend upwards of $250,000 or more doing this plan now.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, so I'll call for a vote on $150,000. Counselor Casiri?
Yes.
Counselor Parker?
Yes.
Counselor Franco?
Yes.
Counselor Jones?
Yes.
Counselor, Melendez is a yes. McBride?
Yes.
Bordelon?
Yes.
Westerville?
Yes.
Jacome?
Yes.
All right, I have nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining.
Thank you, everyone. Good night.
Thank you. Okay, so we have two more. Underwater Pollution Control Facility 10B.
Oh, oh my, I lose the number, is it 2,500,000?
2,500,000.
250,000. What was the second?
Second.
Okay.
Sorry.
Somebody help me.
Okay, so this is a motion by Jacome and it's, yeah. Who was the second?
I will take the second. Franco?
Jacome and Franco. $2,050,000.
Okay, this money is for upgrade renovations to the town sewer pump stations. Again, all of this funding comes from the sewer user fees, just want to make that clear. There's three projects we're looking at this year. Last year, we had funding for the Mumford Cove pump station upgrade. That's one of our major pump stations on the east side of town. We thought we would just be able to replace pumps and controllers by just shutting off valves and whatnot, but when we started doing the detailed design, we found that all the pipes and the valve stuff all have to be replaced. That requires a bypass at the station, temporary bypass, which is expensive, so we need additional funds, so we're asking for another 1.2 million, and also the, just the price of the pumps and equipment is going up as well. The second one is the Gravel Street Pump Station. We had funding for that project as well, but due to some extensive equipment delays due to COVID, you know, we had a contractor that started and we basically had to put that project on hold. The funding had expired, so we are asking for 250,000 so we can complete that project this summer. And then the third thing is, we got a study done for about 13 of our coastal pump stations that are prone to flooding and sea level rise, and we have a number of items that are identified to kind of make those resilient to flooding, such as flood doors, you know, raising the oil fill vents and generator connections, that type of thing. So that's about 600,000, and we are applying to Connecticut DEMIS, which is the Emergency Management, for a federal grant to pay for 90% of that. So those three projects add up to the 2,050,000.
Thank you. Counselor Jones?
Uh, thank you. Director Hanover, so once you get, if you get the grant, the federal grant for 90%, does that money go back into the general fund, or is the 600,000 outside of that?
It goes into the capital reserve for the sewer.
For the, oh.
For the wastewater, yeah.
Okay.
It's reimbursable, so, yeah, we'll get reimbursed after the work's done, and that'll just go back into the capital reserve for the sewer.
Are you pretty confident you'll get that?
Um, yes, we are. I think there's, you know, quite a bit of money out there, and we'll work with the Resiliency Manager to, you know, get that grant together.
And have we been able to utilize our new resiliency person on these projects?
She's working with us on that. She's the primary writer of that grant, actually.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any further discussion? Counselor Westerville?
Uh, thank you very much. Mr. Hanover, was, was the 1 million for Mumford Cove for fiscal year '23 spent? Was all that spent?
No, it's still sitting there.
Okay, so that's, so it's going to cost 2.2 million total to get.
Correct, yeah, it turned out to be a much bigger project than we originally anticipated.
Uh, it's just a huge number to me, so.
No, I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on 2,050,000. Counselor Casiri?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Franco?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Melendez is a yes. McBride?
Yes.
Bordelon?
Yep.
Westerville?
Yes.
Jacome?
Yes.
I have nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining. On two, 10C.
I'll make a motion for $500,000.
Second, Casiri.
Ooh, everybody's jumping on this one.
I just want to get out of here.
All right, you're up.
All right, I got a motion by Franco, second by Casiri.
Okay, there's two components to this project. This is for work at the wastewater treatment plant itself. Again, this is all paid by sewer user fees. The first is for what we call a jockey pump, which is a, we have three very large pumps in our effluent pump station, which pumps the treated sewage over to the Thames River. Those pumps run probably about 50 to 60% of the time when we have maximum flows. At nighttime, when the flows go real low, we use, we have one small jockey pump, because it's much more efficient to run a smaller pump during those low-flow times. So we're asking for money for an additional pump so that we have a redundant backup, and then we also can, you know, swap them back and forth to extend the life of that one pump that we have there. When we did the effluent pump station upgrades a few years ago, we left a spot for that pump, but it was just not put in at that time, so that's the 350,000. And the second project is to change our chlorine treatment, or chlorine of the sewage from chlorine to a UV sterilization. The last step of the process when we're treating the sewage is to kill all the bacteria. Right now, we do that with chlorine. There's this, some challenges with that. One is the cost of the chlorine itself is going way up. It wreaks havoc on all the pumps and the piping. We often have to have employees come in overtime to resolve some issues with those. The storage tanks that we have are nearing the end of their useful life, and just, you know, obviously having chlorine that just employs safety, handling that is a concern. So the, the alternative is to use UV lamps, which a lot of plants have been going to. Basically, we'll take the chlorine contact tanks, put in UV lamps, and, and the UV kills the organisms. You know, the drawbacks to this are just, you know, we have to change bulbs every once in a while, maintain and make sure they're clean, but then there's also a higher electrical use. But, you know, we've had a study done, and it's really kind of almost an even swap, but if you start factoring in some of the other overtime costs and stuff like that, it actually becomes a little bit more cost-effective to have the UV, and it's certainly a lot safer for us. So we're asking for 150,000 to do the design of the system, and then we'll do construction funds next year.
Thank you. Counselor Bordelon?
Uh, thank you. I'm familiar with the UV switchover. I saw this in action actually a while back, and from a conservation and environmental standpoint and safety of employees, the amount of lung damage that chlorine can do at high levels to the cilia in your lungs is just very damaging and can cause a lot of breathing complications if things go awry. Also, when you're treating that and then pumping it back into the ocean, you know, there is long-term effects of chlorine, and it's getting into our fish, wildlife, shellfish, so that's, it's not the best either. So being a coastal community, it's very dangerous. I do have concerns about the electric bill, which brings to my next point. One of the studies I looked at a while ago, when they were looking at implementing this in a different state, they were looking at a solar component to these UV lights. Have we looked at that, or is that something that you're considering for maybe another CIP after the implementation of these solar bulbs?
Um, it's something, you know, we could take a look at it. I mean, it's in the grant utilities area, so there's no incentives for solar, so it would have to be something we would have to purchase, install, maintain, so we'd have to look at the return on investment and something like that.
I think after one year, soon these lights go, and the amount of waste and everything like that, we'd have a number, and I think it would be fair to take that number and, you know, consider, even if we did have to purchase, it would, you know, also be driving the town in a more sustainable fashion, and there might be some grants or other ways to help get funding for that, but I do think that that should be something that, if we vote on the bulbs, that we definitely, if nothing else, would take the numbers, which would, you know, you wouldn't have to hire anybody to do the research, the research would be done for us in the numbers. Take those, and in the meantime, between now and next year, get someone out there to give us a quote on, you know, what we could do for alternative power source. It might be another source, might be, there's a lot of other things you can do besides solar, but it would definitely be something I would consider. I do think this is the direction of moving in a more carbon-neutral, more sustainable way, but we'd have to figure out that, that solar component is my only concern. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussions? Okay, I'm seeing none, so I'll call for a vote on the 500,000. Counselor Casiri?
Yes.
Parker?
Yes.
Franco?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Melendez is yes. McBride?
Yes.
Bordelon?
Yes.
Westerville?
Yes.
Jacome?
Yay.
I have nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstaining.
Make a motion to recess. Make a motion to recess.
Motion to recess by Jacome.
Second, Franco.
Second by Franco. On favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, we are recessed at 11:28.